The Select Board meeting for Monday, September 22nd, 2025 to order. At first, we will be going into an executive session, so I'll take that motion right now.
Mr. Chair, I move we go into an executive session for A pursuant to Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. S E I U Service Employees International Union, Howard's Management Employees Association, H E A Howard's Employees Association, H M E A Highways and Maintenance Employees Association, I A M A W International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, N E P B A New England Police Benevolent Association, Howard's Permanent Firefighters Association, Massachusetts Coalition of Police Patrol and Superior Officers.
Okay, it's been moved. Has anyone?
Second.
It's moved in the second. Unless you want to stay here for another 10 minutes, I'm not going to repeat it. Again, I want to point out to you that we're posted for us coming back to an open session no sooner than 6:30 PM. With that in mind, we're going to take a vote. All in favor of the motion? Pete?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The Select Board meeting back into open session. We previously had entered executive session to discuss a number of labor contracts that we have been attempting to resolve. We had vigorous discussion about all of that, but we have come to no conclusion on any of them at this point. So I'm hoping that you will all stand with me and observe the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All righty. Staff comments and announcements. Do we have any? Well, I'm going to take the opportunity to make an announcement.
After you.
That's rather important. She's not here at the moment, but I want to recognize that this is the last week of Meghan Eldridge in the employment of the town of Harwich as the Assistant Town Administrator. We will be going to turn this over to Tony in a couple of seconds, honoring her in various ways within the town. But I want to take the opportunity at the top of the Select Board meeting to thank her for all that she's done for the town and wish her well in her future endeavors with that, Tony.
Yeah, just for anybody that may want to come by, we're going to do a coffee for her in the office on Wednesday, that would be the 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Just come, have a chat. We'll have, you know, coffee and whatever and wish Meghan well. And if you can stop by, please do.
Any other staff announcements? Weekly briefing.
So just a couple of quick updates, I think, from last week. Wanted me to focus a little bit on the Great, you know, Sand Lakes work that's going on right now. So there's been quite a bit of survey work and, you know, residents have seen people out there marking different things. So right now, it's really to get the survey done, also doing some soil analysis. So they'll be doing some boring to do some soil testing and groundwater testing. Much of that is sort of a precursor to when we go out for construction. The more information firms have when they're bidding for that, like, you know, it's sand all the way down. It's a little different than, you know, if you find rock and things like that when they're trying to, you know, bid for different types of work. So that's primarily what's going on at this point in time. I did also check with the town of Chatham. You know, we do have a letter from our Select Board to theirs through the IMA to formally request the inclusion of the Great Sand Lakes into the IMA. So that hasn't made it to their agenda yet, but hopefully it will soon, just so we can kind of cross that off our list for tracking.
We've agreed to not use.
What's that?
We've agreed to limit our use of acronyms. For those people who don't know, it's.
Oh, which one? Oh, IMA. Intermunicipal agreement, I'm sorry. I will try to do better at that. Let's see. So we will be putting in our state revolving fund application for the Great Land, Great Sand Lakes part of the project. So that has a due date of October 3rd, and we have set an internal deadline of this Friday to have pretty much the package complete. So if there are any minor loose ends to tie up, we'll give us next week to get ready to submit that on Friday, the 3rd. So everything is moving along with that. We have two meetings with regulatory boards this week related to Great Sand Lakes for 15 Wales Road where we're going to have a generator and a small shed. We meet with the planning board tomorrow night and the ZBA on Tuesday, Concom on October 1st. So these are all part of that application package to make sure we get all the approvals that we need and be ready to submit on Friday, October 3rd. So if anybody's wondering what's going on out there, that's what they're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooks Academy still rolling along.
Brooks Academy's still rolling along. We expect to get the price proposal from Akeem Habib Architects and Associates by this Friday, and then we'll begin to negotiate the rest of that contract. And then I'll talk a little bit about Waltham Road Stairs when we get to the TA portion. There's a memo in there about where we stand with the, that part of that project for engineering firms.
Questions for the acting town administrator?
Serious reactions being occurring. Tell your doctor about any medicines you take.
Was that addressing this or is that just a general comment? We'll assume it's an inadvertently unmuted mic. All right, so we'll move on then. No public comments? Anyone out there in computer land have anything? Anyone in the audience? I'm going to be adjouring really soon.
Hey, Mr. Chair, just as FYI, I don't know if you plan, but under the staff comments and announcement, you had something on the agenda in the packet tonight. I didn't know if you wanted to comment on it.
Oh, gosh. Yeah. I knew I was going to ride right through to something. Thank you, Pete. And normally, she's entrenched right in the back of our room, and I'm sorry she's going to have to see this on TV, but we have terrific news. I received a letter from the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association relative to Emily Mitchell, who has been awarded the prestigious Certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk designation by the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association, and they've sent out a press release to that extent. This is, Anita, I think, can speak to how difficult this is. Why don't you say a couple of words about?
It's quite an honor. Massachusetts Municipal, it's the CMMC certified. I wasn't ready to speak on this, but.
Now you are.
I guess I am. It is, it is quite a prestigious honor. If my memory serves me correctly, what she had to do is take a test, and it's a certified test that's quite extensive, open law book test. And I give her all the credit in the world for being able to do that. It's quite an honor for her to achieve that in that profession, and that's what I'd like to refer to it as. It is a profession. And in England, they would say, I had the honor years ago of meeting the mayor of England. He came here to the town hall in Harwich, and he informed me that the clerk's position, although he said it was the Clark's position, is the most prestigious position to hold in England. Not just anyone can hold or have that particular position. And I said, very comically, I said, would you tell the gentleman upstairs because they think I just sell dog licenses? So to Emily, congratulations.
Pay no mind to that because they also mispronounced the word Harwich.
It's true. It's Harich.
But thank you, Pete. I'm sure that the whole board joins us in congratulating Emily for this accomplishment. I appreciate you bringing it up because I didn't want to blow past that. So now, we're at the point where even with stalling, I bet you we don't have any public comment. So I'm going to ask for the minutes to, I didn't have time to look at them until recently, but there's a whole section in there that is really unclear relative to the sound bylaw, the noise bylaw, because it talks about it as if we inadvertently conflated that with the liquor licenses. What happened is under law, the liquor licenses, the noise, the part of that when we were delegating authorities for them to have entertainment, that became part of the liquor license also. It used to be a freestanding thing. That does not at all come out in this, in the minutes in that manner. So I'd like to correct that, so just hold them until next week. Now, the long-awaited representation of the needs assessment by the University of Massachusetts for the Council on Aging. I'm glad we're able to get it back again.
Hi, good evening. I'm Julie Groom. I am the Director of the Council on Aging, and we have our colleagues at UMass Boston here tonight to present to you the findings of the needs assessment. And I'll just add, I have the next generation of public servants here with me tonight.
She's behaving very well.
This is her second meeting now, and she's, she's taken it in. All right. So I will turn it over to Caitlin and Claire. They have been our partners on this for the last year and have just really been phenomenal to work with.
Thank you, Julie. I just wanted to do a quick tech check. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is a nuts. Okay. So good evening, everybody. My name is Claire Kershaw. I am Senior Research Associate at UMass Boston, and I'm here with my colleague tonight, Caitlin Coyle, who is the Director of the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging within the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston. So we are here tonight to present some of the high-level findings from our recent research community needs assessment. These really are just the high-level findings. We have about 100-page report and do plan on doing a broader community presentation going forward, but these are just some high-level findings to present tonight at the board as well. So if you want to go to the next slide, please. So we do want to thank all the people who this project would not be possible without, specifically Julie Groom, the Director of the Harwich Council on Aging, the Council on Aging Board members, as well as the Friends. Also, all of the stakeholders and residents who took the time to actually participate in either the interviews, the focus groups, or the surveys. Next. Next slide. Thank you. So our research involved creating a demographic profile, conducting key informant interviews with different people in the community, such as first responders, Council on Aging staff, as well as planning professionals. We conducted three focus groups as well, including residents and aging professionals. And then we also did a community survey. Next slide, please. So as many people receive a really, really great result for this. We had about 1,816 people that responded to the survey, which was about a 26% response rate. We heard a little bit more from women than men, but overall, really good response rate and just shows how, you know, the people of Harwich really want to be involved and share their opinions. Next slide. Actually, you can go on to the next slide, which is kind of just a smaller slide. So demographically speaking, there was about 1% growth in Harwich between 2010 and 2020. The proportion with the most growth was among those 60-plus, which increased from 38% to 45%. By 2030, this number is expected to be around 51%. So Harwich is aging rapidly, and another striking finding that we had was that among the 80-plus population specifically, that population will almost double from 2020 to 2040. Next slide, please. We asked what they value about Harwich as a community, and residents told us that they love the community spirit, the beauty of the natural surroundings, and the strong local services. Harwich is known for friendly, safe, and just the right size. People also, at the same time, shared concerns about their ability to age in Harwich, specifically surrounding affordability, the high cost of living, lack of downsizing options, and access to transportation and healthcare were all common themes. These issues were especially challenging for older adults on fixed incomes. So many people were hearing concerns about, you know, the future and being able to access the community later in life. Next slide, please. So nearly one third of Harwich residents aged 65-plus have incomes that are under $50,000. A large share of households that are headed by someone aged 65 and older, 11% actually report annual incomes under $25,000. So this does demonstrate a sizable segment of the population that's older that is at risk of financial insecurity or economic disadvantage. So we asked people specifically about home modifications and repairs to live in their homes safely for the next five years. Our survey results showed that 44% of respondents need home modifications, 35% reported needing home repairs, and 12% of all respondents could not actually afford home repairs. So that was about 217 people cannot afford these changes. Next slide, please. So we asked people in the next five years if they needed to move from their current residence, what kind of housing they would prefer in Harwich. The top three responses were a condominium or a townhome, a single-family smaller home, or a 55-plus community. We also asked people about transportation. We asked folks about driving status, so not just, you know, if they drive or not, but asked people if they limit their driving in any way. So things like avoiding driving at night or avoiding highways. And so 84% of respondents said that they have, they drive with no limitations, but there was 16% that do drive with limitations or do not drive at all. So it was 11% that drive with some limitations, 5% of respondents did not drive at all. We then asked people about community supports and health services. We asked if people have an impairment that limits their ability to participate in the community and found that increases with age. So as you can see here, about 7% of those in their 60s have an impairment that limits their ability to participate in the community. This increases to 11% of those in their 70s and then 22% of those in their 80s. Another major finding was that 37% of respondents are caregivers, so providing care to someone who is frail or disabled. This tends to be more prevalent among younger older adults, and the most frequent, frequently reported conditions requiring this care was frailty or mobility impairment, followed by Alzheimer's or dementia, followed by recovery from surgery or injury. Respondents also told us that caregiving is very challenging and that people need more resources and support. So of the 611 respondents who reported being a caregiver, many reported deterioration of social life, mental health, physical health, as well as financial circumstances. Respondents were also asked whether they had trouble accessing healthcare that they needed, and 14% said that they do not have a regular source of care. So that was about 250 people. And 19% have had trouble accessing healthcare providers in the past year. We then went on to ask people about social participation. Most respondents speak with someone or use email or social media to connect with people weekly. However, 69% get together in person with someone at least weekly, 31% only get together monthly or less frequently. We also asked if people know someone living nearby who they could rely on for help if they could, and 15% said that they did not. The next seven questions about the findings for, we asked that was specific to the Harwich Council on Aging. So we asked who had ever been to the Council on Aging and found participation is considerably more common among older residents. As you can see in this slide, 24% of those in their 60s attend programs and services offered by the COA in comparison to 45% of those in their 70s, and then that jumps to 62% in their 80s. And what we found by, you know, doing this in multiple communities, this age-related pattern of participation is not unusual for senior centers, but reflects an increasing value of the COA to older residents. So we found that 45% of users of the Council on Aging come monthly or more often. 24% attend weekly. So again, this range of participation really highlights the broad continuum of affiliation with the COA. Another major finding was that participation in programs and services at the COA is really hampered by a lack of knowledge. So there was two different questions asked in terms of limiting factors and what would make people more likely to use the Council on Aging. The top factors that we did tend to think about people not knowing, if not knowing what's offered, also not needing services provided, as well as still being working. And then in terms of asking how people would be more likely to use the COA, the top answers were if I had more knowledge about the programs and services available and if programs and services were better suited to meet my needs and interests. There was also 14% that said other, and that was some write-in responses. So we can find that information in the report and possibly our larger presentation. Specifically in terms of the programs and services, we asked what people's prioritization was for expanding programs and services. So in terms of programs, the highest-ranked programs were lectures, guest speakers, or cultural events, followed by indoor exercise, performances and presentations, educational classes or courses, and then day trips. In terms of services, people wanted to prioritize wellness programs, information and referral about local contractors, professional services, information and referral about health and social services, and then access to health insurance counseling. We also asked people about their communication preferences and how they receive information about what's going on in the town. And we found that the number one place of information from our survey respondents was the Council on Aging newsletter, the printed version, followed by the online version, next the local newspaper, email or text communication, and then the Council on Aging website. We also asked if people knew who to contact in Harwich should they, or someone in their family, need help accessing social services. And by social services, we mean things like subsidies for transportation or housing, in-home supports, or access to mental health services. So 38% of respondents said that they do not know who to call in the community. We also wanted to ask people about digital literacy and technology, and specifically how confident people were in various online tasks. Most reported confidence across all online tasks, however, this did vary significantly by age. So those over 80 were more likely to report not being confident or needing more practice compared to younger respondents across all of these activities. So, you know, the number one being staying safe or protecting your personal data and identity, making and attending virtual medical appointments, submitting information online, managing applications online, purchasing items, and getting money, as well as registering for events online. Respondents also asked what they were, have been concerned about a series of items which finance this. So while 58% of respondents reported not being concerned, 42% reported concerns. So this was 766 individuals. And then among those who reported financial concerns, the top concerns reported were getting basic home maintenance completed on their home, accessing dental care, paying for real estate taxes, paying for utilities, as well as accessing eyeglasses or vision care. Many older residents also continue to work or are looking to work beyond the traditional requirement age of 65, and this includes 56% of those in their 60s, 20% of those in their 70s, and 7% of those in their 80s. And interestingly, many older adults who are still working do not know when they expect to retire. So 25% of people that are working full-time or part-time or are looking for work, they're not sure about when they anticipate retiring. I'm next going to go over just some top high-level takeaways. So we found that financial security is the top concern among respondents and residents. Housing, maintenance, repair, and downsizing are primary needs. We also found that increased awareness of programs and services is needed, and the expanding program offerings could encourage new participation from other groups of people. Some other findings are the additional medical transportation needed to address increasing demand as the population ages. And as I had mentioned earlier, caregiving is very common, and caregivers need this support and resources available. We also found that the risk of social isolation among older residents is growing, and so that is a major area of concern going forward. And again, these are just some of the high-level findings from our report, which had a lot of different components going into it. And so the report will be available, that has, you know, the full slew of findings, as well as a broader community presentation in person in Harwich in the upcoming months. So thank you so much for your time, and I think this would be the time to give you your questions or the board wants to say something.
Questions and comments from the board?
Sure, I'll start.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you both, and thank you for being here. I'm thrilled with the number of respondents who participated. I can't imagine that this is anything really specific to just Harwich. I'm sure there's, most of Cape Cod, most of America feels this way in populations where the demographics are similar to that of Harwiches. The data speaks for itself. What happens next?
So that is the question of the night. So basically, we plan to review the report in more detail. Like Claire explained, these are very, very high-level findings. We get back a more than 100-page report with really fine level detail, and our goal is to talk things through with the COA Board, the Friends Board, and to focus on three to five places, probably more like three, that will have the biggest impact and that will be the most achievable, most importantly, with the resources that we currently have. So within our current budget, with the current staffing levels, that way we can move forward with something soon and carry forward an impact to the community without having to come before you and ask for an enhancement of services, at least not in the foreseeable future. We want to see what we can focus on with what we have right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Other comments?
Julie, your department is going to be very, very important in the years coming up based upon the aging population. What, I was very interested, the last time we had this presentation, who paid for this? Because I thought it should get some credit in the community for who paid for this, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. Thank you. That was how I was going to end today, with a big thank you to our friends of the Harwich Council on Aging. So we have a couple of their representatives, of their board members here tonight. We also have a couple of our COA Board members here to support us. We also have a couple of our COA board members here to support us. So the Friends did fund the vast majority of the study. The final price tag was $35,000 for a comprehensive needs assessment. The Friends contributed almost all of that to show our commitment to the project. The COA contributed about $9,000, which was taken from our state formula grant.
A big thanks to the Friends. That's quite a commitment. Just one last thing. We have people from the school system here. Do you, I remember several years ago when I was going door-to-door, people would say to me, older couples, they have nobody to shovel for them. And small minor repairs, are you able to reach out to some of the schools to do things like, you know, here's a lady or a couple that can't shovel their walks, this is available for some of the booster clubs? I just, it's a, I always regard the schools as a great resource. I just wondered if you were able to utilize them.
So I would love to do something like that. The concern, in my understanding, has been about liability. When I came into the COA about six years ago, I was told that the department's policy, for lack of a better word, you know, protocol, I guess was a better word, is to not make specific referrals to service providers in the community because we may not have the full breadth of information as to how reliable those services are. And we certainly don't want to be putting the town in a position to be liable for any services that we may have connected people to. But with the board's support, I would be happy to explore some creative ways to solve that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure, happy to. Mark, Jeff will be happy to come over and shovel if you need some help.
I just texted my two kids. They're buying Ace Hardware, now buying shovels.
Excellent plan. So in all seriousness, appreciate all this information. I probably have, you know, too many questions, so I'm not going to ask them all tonight. But similar to what Selectman Handler had to say, there were a few instances where the folks online highlighted how it compares to other communities. But overall, if you focus on the Cape exclusively, how do these numbers compare to other Cape towns?
Pretty similar. So Brewster, the Brewster COA, completed a needs assessment of their, in their town, I want to say two years ago, it was very recent. And I did review those findings before our study got off the ground, just to see, you know, what was found right over the line. And a lot of the findings were echoed there. There are some, you know, minor differences, I think some things that we do better in this town, maybe some things that Brewster does a little bit better. But overall, the pattern was the same.
Okay. Thank you for that. If I could continue, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Curious as to the definition of caregiving by family members? If we can define a little bit more of the, what does it mean to be a caregiver by a family member?
Sure. I'm going to have either Claire or Caitlin answer that, just giving the detail of what was in that question.
Sure. This is Caitlin. So the purposes of the survey that we did there in Harwich, the way we defined caregiver was, do you now or have you in the past five years provided care to someone who was frail or disabled? So it actually didn't specify whether it was a family member. It was more specific to, did you provide care to someone who was frail or disabled? It gave examples like a family member or friend, but it was not specific to family members. And so people selected yes or no. And if they selected yes, then they were asked a few questions about that experience. I think, just as my own anecdotal observation on that issue, is that family members in particular don't always identify with the word caregiver. So they don't, they see themselves as, I'm just an adult daughter taking care of my mom, I'm not a caregiver. And so it is sometimes a hard population to identify and engage because of that, just sort of the way they affiliate, especially when it's within family.
Thank you for that explanation. It kind of led to my next point of, I didn't see in here, so I don't assume that you get as granular as asking if a parent is being supported by one of their children. So I don't mean financially, but just in the general sense, are they driving them to doctor's appointments themselves? Are they going grocery shopping with them or for them? I didn't see, I didn't see that detail in this report. Is that true?
That is generally true. I think the closest we could get at that is we would be able to identify people who say they live with, like a 60-year-old who lives with their parents, or, you know, they sort of co-reside in multi-generational households, but not specifically to the kinds of sort of just supportive care that you're talking about.
We did ask about transportation specifically in terms of primary methods. So one of the other response categories was that I have a friend or a family member drive me. And so that also will be in the appendix of the report, too. So there might be specific findings that apply to that.
Yeah, that's true. And that is usually the most common. So for people who don't drive or say that they're limiting their driving in some way, we ask them how they get around. And usually, and we do include, you know, they get rides from family or friends.
Okay. And I appreciate that as well. And I think that's important information because, and I don't necessarily believe that the child has to live with the parent in this scenario, but they could live in close proximity. But, believe me, I believe in the COA. I think it's a tremendous organization. I just think, I come at a little more old school where family stepped up before the community, and then when the community, when the family wasn't there, that's when the community kicked in. So I was just curious as to how much local support they had with family members. But with that aside, I appreciate it. You had alluded to, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could continue, that a third of folks 65 or over have an income less than $50,000. Somebody alluded to a number, and I didn't hear it, I apologize, but with folks making less than $25,000. What was that percentage? Or age gap, or whatever?
Yeah. That was based on median household income. And so that, just to note, does not include wealth, it's just income. And I believe it was 11% of that. So there was about a third that live on less than $50,000 per year. And of that third, about 11% are living on less than $25,000 per year. And just to give you a sense, we, another thing we do at UMass is we calculate this cost of living metric for older adults. And for Barnstable County, for a couple that is in good health and does not have a mortgage, they need about $48,000 to just make basic payments on life, including healthcare, transportation, food, et cetera. If that couple does have a mortgage, so the same couple, good health, that jumps to about, needing about $64,000 per year to live in Barnstable County. So when you think about, you know, a third of the population is living on less than 50, and we know that, we sort of estimate that the real cost of living for an older couple, older household is about 60, you know, between $48,000 and $65,000 per year. You can start to see that that same third of the population is potentially, you know, they're making it, but they're giving up, potentially giving up other things in their life or having to make decisions about how to spend their limited funds.
Thank you for that. And I'll wrap up quickly, Mr. Chair. And you also alluded to 12% cannot afford to repair the homes in which they currently live in. So when you look at, you've got a third of the folks 65-plus who are making less than $50,000, 11% of those making less than 25. 12% of the population in that category can't repair their homes. When we talk about a $10 million bond, or a $30 million bond, or a $50 million bond to go out and do some of this work that we continually talk about, and we don't, we don't believe that it's a real, it doesn't have a real impact on people who live in this community? It does. $50, you know, a tax bill, $100 a tax bill, $500 a tax bill. It adds up real quickly when folks are trying to determine if they're going to repair their home, if they're going to be able to go to the grocery store. It's real money that affects people in this town that we really need to pay attention to as we continue to go further and further in debt. I'll leave it on that note, and thank you for your time.
Very uplifting. But we will be talking about the finance part of that.
Feels like Sunday Mass, actually.
No, I was waiting for that sermon. I think we're all on board with that, by the way. Anita, do you have anything?
The only thing I wanted to say is thank you very much for bringing this forward. I know we have an aging population in comparison to our younger generation, I think, is going down. So we, and I don't know where we're going to ever find that balance. Because I know, I grew up here, I grew up on the Cape. I'm not a Cape Codder. I am still a Wasatcher, but I've been here a very long time. And a lot of people that I grew up with, their friends, their children are not on the Cape.
Right.
So their children are off Cape, and people have come here to retire. So I don't know how we'll find the balance, but thank you very much for bringing this forward that we can see we do have an aging population. But thank you very much.
And I was going to build on what Anita just said, but before I do, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Friends of the Council on Aging again. They are hugely integral to what's capable of happening in the COA. We've had a great relationship with the Friends throughout the years. Thank you for doing this. So Julie, I do notice that in the presentation, they ended the analysis at 2020. That's an inflection point. And the reality is, even when we were looking at our local comprehensive plan and developing it, the figures we were using for population were already outdated. What's being projected for 2030 actually has happened largely because of the boatload of people that have come here to, you know, reside because of COVID. They came here to escape something, and they stayed. And this is not just a, can we provide services things, there's an expectation level that's higher for the people that showed up about what it is that they can access. So that's a hidden kind of important issue in this report, is I think as you study it, you're going to find that it's actually worse than it looks on the surface. Just to mention that, because the services that are available out there haven't gotten more robust. But the, you know, the expectation of what they could get, I mean, echoes way beyond the people who roll into town saying, where's the pool? Where's the garbage pickup? This has a lot to do with, what does the COA do for me? That has been increasing through the years, so.
I would have to agree with that. I started at the COA about six months before the pandemic began, so I only saw, you know, a brief snapshot of what the day-to-day life was like there. But I'm grateful that I did, because seeing the transition of the number of people who come through the door, the population that comes through the door, really has been astounding. Our attendance is, it has exploded since the pandemic ended. I think people really started to value the social connections that they had missed out on for so long. And I guess, you know, obviously, people are moving into the, into the community as well, but we really see so many people walking through our door, more than we used to.
And intuitively, there's a, I don't think it's uniformly the same percentages that was already existing here. There's an awful lot of people that took the opportunity to permanently locate on a retirement plan. So that's going to skew some of these numbers, too, because I'm pretty sure, as I said, that you're going to see a spike in the over 60 number when you start looking at what really happening now. But I don't want to end on a down note. You folks do a terrific job, and thank you again to the Friends for funding this and a lot of other things that make the COA what it is.
Great. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I am very glad that everything went smoothly. And I'm happy to come back and talk about anything in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Friends again.
Okay. So I had a phone conversation with Meredith Anderson late last week, and what we got here is, I just want to frame this, because Meredith and I were talking, there's actually two things happening at the same exact moment. We've been talking about modifying the plan as it relates to what the obligations of Chatham are versus Harwich. Now, that's one discussion. And that's a discussion I'm pretty sure that you're going to share some thoughts about because you were talking about letting us know what the process is and what the timeframe is likely to be. There is also, at the same moment, a real discussion to be had, because in the prior year, a couple of things have happened. There was a discussion that we hadn't been connecting with each other early enough to be able to understand what the capacity of the town is relative to the needs of the school system. So that's what I'm trying to focus on, at least in the near term. And I know Michael had brought forth in the last couple of years, you know, some thoughts about excess and deficiency. We're kind of interested in where that goes, because anything that you can't fund from that this year that you had funded before, we have to backfill before we go forward in whatever increase in expenses that you have. So, not that you can give me an answer, but I think that it's good for you to understand where we're coming from early on. Again, Meredith, thank you for coming, I really appreciate it. I also want to make sure we say that we haven't voted past the letter that we sent to the school committee, and that the school committee has not voted a position for you to come here and pronounce to us. So with that, it's still an extremely valuable discussion, if you want to come up and have a seat. I see you brought an entourage.
Takes a village.
Thank you, sir.
And I do thank you all for coming tonight.
So what Scott's passing out is a brief section of the presentation that he gave us during one of our workshops this summer, to really try to help everyone on the committee. Mark, I think you were there for this part of it, to understand how the regional agreement works and, you know, what it would take to make an amendment. So just kind of a history of how we came together and what the review looked like in '21. And then talking about, you know, the cost of what it looks like based on each town. So that's just, you know, kind of a brief section of the presentation. But basically, Dawn and I talked, and so did Jeff and I, about the regional agreement and what an amendment looks like. And the biggest piece that I think that we're looking for is that we need a proposal from Harwich or Chatham, because it's an agreement between the two towns. So that has to come from the towns. And the proposal needs to be specific as to why we need this. You know, why does Harwich need it? And what are the suggestions and what are things that could change in the regional agreement that could support what Harwich is seeing? Or it could happen in Chatham, too. So I think that, you know, I'm happy that in September, we've, I've had multiple talks with multiple Select Board members, which is great for the school year, and hopefully that will continue on this Thursday's meeting. Michael will share with us the budget timeline. I will immediately send it out to all of you so that you can be a part of that, because as you said, Dawn, they're two separate conversations. It's the regional agreement, and how can we change it? If we can change, if we can change it, how can we change it? And then we're coming into budget season right now. So.
Which is, that was the conversation we had. So in prior years, some people had felt we didn't relay our thoughts on that budget until like January, February. And I, as I said to you over the phone, it's really important that we get it out before it gets locked in for the superintendent's budget, which then is handed over to the school committee, which then gets, you know, sent to us. So it wasn't, we didn't catch you early enough upstream to be able to deal with that. But I consider that the more important issue, because part of the why is going to be, you know, the consequences of what happens if you can't come to a point where we can fund some things and it starts affecting your actual programs, which I don't think anybody wants to see. And that, that particular problem affects both Chatham and Harwich kids, and I don't want to see us messing around with equality education while the adults are trying to figure out how to pay for it.
Correct. Right. So going into this budget season, you know, we will be as transparent. I mean, we have been transparent, but we're going to start the process a little earlier this year. But then as far as the, you know, any amendment for the regional agreement, it does take time. So, you know, we have to, or one of the towns has to come up with what that would look like, how the language would change, is, does it affect the formula? And then it has to come back to us for review. It also has to be reviewed by DESI. So it's not something that.
And two-town meetings.
And two-town meetings. It's not something that could happen by this town meeting season. But if we continue the conversation now, it's something that maybe we can prepare for, for the following town meeting season, is what I'm thinking. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, we would, we would be pushing it to get it to town meeting this year. I don't think, I think that it could still happen, but there would need to be a tangible proposal. be a tangible proposal that's, you know, that's on the table soon. And I, and I think the important piece of that is that, is that it involves a lot of communication and a lot of, you know, selling the change, you know? So we changed the agreement last in 2021. And, and while, while it went smoothly in Harwich because we could go up and stand before Harwich Town Meeting and say, if you vote yes to this, the town will save in the neighborhood of half a million dollars and within a few years, it's likely to be upwards of over a million, which it currently is. That was an easy sell in Harwich. It was not an easy sell in Chatham. And, and the key piece, which is really on the first page of the little handout I gave you, it just, it, it has the clause of what does it take to change the regional agreement? And the operative thing in that is that it takes a majority vote at an annual town meeting. And the important thing is it's an annual town meeting, not a special town meeting. And it's a majority vote in both towns, you know, so.
For the exact same agreement. It can't be a different version.
So, so the tax, you know, so the taxpayers and voters in Chatham need to understand why we're doing it. And, and they were able last time to kind of understand that, hey, you know, the, I wrote, I wrote a paper, you know, disseminated out, you know, presented it to the, you know, to the committee, shared it with the select boards, that from where I was sitting, there was one thing I could go and put my finger on that just didn't seem right. And that is when I, when I would calculate per pupil expenditures at Harwich Elementary School versus Chatham Elementary School, they were higher at Chatham Elementary School. And there was nothing that I could do about that because it was an economy of scales issue. Just it was, Chatham Elementary School had become so much smaller than Harwich Elementary School. I couldn't provide the same services for the same per pupil costs. And it, and I, you know, and, and there was, you know, the way I looked at it as the superintendent, it was this unintended impact. Nobody in Chatham intended Harwich to be subsidizing Chatham Elementary School, but the way the original regional agreement was laid out was causing that to happen. So, so I was able to go and at least sell that to Chatham, but it took a lot of time to go and make that happen. And I think, you know, you can imagine that whatever change might be proposed, there needs to be a really strong understanding in both towns, you know, why, you know, why the change is, you know, why the change is needed.
Okay. And again, that's why this discussion's happening because I'm far more worried in the near term about what the budget looks like because that's something that we do have some control of, or modicum at least. And I understand about the changing of the agreement. And we can't go back again next year or this year, even go back to the Chatham Select Board and say, I don't know, what are you willing to offer us? We got to have a tangible ask.
Right.
And so I'm trying to do this methodically with the board so that we're doing, you know, the same things parallel that we've just discussed, understanding that you needed to hear the budget part of this right now because after you start formulating it, it's really difficult to walk it back and then redo it again. You've been very amenable to working with us and I appreciate that. And I was here during that point of time. I think one of the selling points became, okay, but we're going to regionalize the two elementary schools too. And they didn't want the Chatham kids to be traveling into Harwich.
But even that couldn't happen without a change to the regional.
I get that, but I'm just saying that that was something that got their attention is that ultimately, you know what? It's going to affect our kids. It's not just, it's going to be travel. It's not just the cost per pupil. That conversation became a lot easier to have when if you want your own elementary school, this is what it costs. And if we want our elementary school, this is what it costs. But we never got past, we did say at the time, we're happy with the change, but there are things that have to occur in the future and we just never explained what the future looked like. So I think we can all agree on that. It's how we get there is in part, but in the night. And we got to map out how this looks so that we can do what we need to do with the Chatham Board, but at the same time work with you folks about, you know, what the budget is this year. And it's premature for me to get any further than that because Mr. Kinseriff is sitting right back there and he's going to give us a presentation about, you know, where we are in our budget and where we can reasonably think we're going to be in, like receipts. And that's an important part of this discussion because that's what the pie looks like.
And I think the budget obviously is in the forefront because we're walking into budget season right now. But we, I don't believe that the conversation about the regional agreement should be put on the back burner. I think that they need to be happening simultaneously so that, so that hopefully there is some sort of, you know, concrete proposal that can come between the two towns.
You're right. And they need to be parallel, but I just wanted to make the point that there's two things happening. It isn't just one.
Right.
So, and you folks don't have control over the agreement. So that part of it's going to be our problem. Questions?
I'd like to hear from some other board members at this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you for both being here. Welcome to Soon To Be Retired.
I'm not going anywhere, by the way.
You know, we have Eric here and I think that's very important. We probably can't get to a granular level now, but I think with Eric's help, we could graphically show the schools in Chatham where we are with our levy ceiling and what the projection is going forward. You know, you know, we're going to have higher health insurance costs this year. So I think we can make a case with Eric's help and our board here to give somewhat of the why. It's not going to be fine tuned with numbers, but I think we can make that case. Once we can make that case, I think the second thing is, as you've asked, is we need to give you what we think would work best for proposal. As Scott has helped so much with Charles and myself, you know, there are some things out there that I think we could look at and start to work at. For example, the Manchester Essex Agreement. I think I was on the Montemori School Rebuilding Committee. Remind me if I'm wrong, Scott, a lot of the people on that committee who were from Chatham were very amenable to sharing 50% of capital costs, at least on that project. But I think, I think we could quite get, we could come to a close agreement on that for capital costs. So then all we have left over is student enrollment. And I think, just a little bit of data here. Harwich has an assessed value of $9 billion roughly on property and Chatham has $11 billion. So I think part of the solution is to bring in assessed values. I was talking to a school system in New York today. They get two property tax bills. They get a property tax bill for their regular town operations. They get a property tax bill for their schools, all based on their property's assessed value. So in my mind, what we should be working forward to is I hope we could come to some kind of agreement on the capital cost. You know, I don't want to go into the reasons of why that school needed so much work, but come to agreement on the capital costs and then look at a combination of student enrollment, which we have now, and equalized valuation. I think if we can come up with something like that, we could give it to you and we could start to work on it. You know, the other alternative, as Scott has mentioned, DY, maybe go back in time to where we had more of a split 70-30, work on that. But I do think Chatham is a very wealthy town. We have a progressive tax system federally. You know, we need to look at, you know, because of their wealth, that that equalized valuation should be part of the formula. Now, that may be a little bit of a harder sell to Chatham, but Chatham taxpayers are getting a break this year. So, you know, we, I think we can, you know, and I'd be interested to hear what the superintendent has to say, but I think we can come a little bit closer and move this along after our presentation from Eric tonight about the why. And then we can start to put together what we can give to you to start to work on with your school committee.
And I think we discussed this too. I think one of the things that is really vexing in this discussion is that there was never any consideration given to the possible future volatility of the, you know, student body mix and that there was no floor and there was no ceiling. So that's kind of gotten us to where we are right now is there was no, it was no certainty to whether or not if Chatham continues to have us a lower enrollment, how much of the fair Harwich residents are we going to have to pay? And I'm not, I'm not going to defend whether that was wise or unwise of anybody back at that point, but as it's played out, it's really played out in an unintended way because we're pushing 80% right now for Harwich enrollment. And I've said this for a number of years. Scott's heard he could replay The Greatest Hits later on, but that was where I was worried about it going is it was going to go through the 70s and start heading into the 80s. And at what point has that become really difficult to sustain because essentially we're operating a school system that other people are guests in when it gets to a certain point. And I don't mean that to be pejorative or argumentative. I mean, factually, we're going to wind up being the sponsor for a school system that has some other students in it from another town. And that wasn't what anybody presupposed. So, you know, I'm not looking for a solution today because if you could come up with that, we've got other problems that you could probably help us solve too. But Pete, did you, Jeff?
I'm still formulating a couple of thoughts over here, Mr. Chair, if I could have a little more time.
Okay. But this is an SAT test and the pencils have to be down in one minute.
Fine. Thank you.
Scott.
If you want, Dawn, I can, I can just speak.
Buy him some time.
Yeah, sure. I can buy, I can buy Jeff time here. But to, to speak to something that Mark brought up, you know, there's, so, so one of the things that I think is challenging, you know, for regions is the Chapter 70 formula. And again, that's something that, that we can't fix on the school side and you can't fix on the select board side. That's, you know, it's laid out in state legislature. And on the back, on the back page of what we shared with you, there's, it talks about, you know, what the state says the expressed goal of the Chapter 70 system is. And it says establishing how much each town should contribute towards its foundation budget based on the municipality's wealth. And understanding the Chapter 70 formula is like an advanced calculus class. But, but the, but there's a, there is a challenge in there in terms of it, it really does treat like the 80, or sorry, the 20% most wealthy communities in the state relatively the same. It really doesn't differentiate wealth. But when you're in a marriage where you're in that top, you know, that top 20% or maybe, maybe one town's in the top 20% and the other one's just slightly outside of it, there is a disparity, the way the formula plays out. And again, I think it's, it's something that, you know, I've, you know, when there were conversations on what do we need to do to fix the Chapter 70 formula, I was at different public forums talking about, you know, here's this shortcoming in your formula when it comes to regions. But I'm sure the explanation went over a lot of people's heads and I don't know how that one gets fixed. But, but that addresses, you know, that speaks to that wealth piece. And I, and I do think to the, to the enrollment factor, I remember my first, you know, this is my 13th year here. My first year here, there were members of the Finance Committee and Select Board in Harwich at the time, you know, and they were concerned that Chatham was going to go to 0% in its enrollment, you know, within its enrollment. Well, you know, I, we, there's been like a 3% ish, you know, movement over, you know, over, you know, the, the last decade. It's clearly not going to 0%, but both towns, you know, both towns have lost, you know, lost enrollment. And they think Anita was just bringing, you know, bringing up sort of the demographic changes, you know, with the presentation in the council for the, you know, for the aging. You know, so we, we do see both towns losing student enrollment. It's just Chatham lost it particularly early on at a faster clip that, that did lead to some of that enrollment shift because, you know, because at the end of the day, the bulk of the regional agreement formula is based on student enrollment. So there was, you know, there, there was a shift that, you know, that, that went towards Harwich and away from Chatham as that enrollment ratio slid. Did that buy you enough time, Jeff?
Hold on one second. And the issue that you were just discussing, I don't want to throw a wet blanket on this, but I was in the Selectment and Councilors Association in 2000 and we were talking about the same problem with the Chapter 70 formula. And that's 25 years. It hasn't been a movement to fixing it at all. And I suspect it may have something to do with the fact that the legislators, legislature is heavily skewed towards Suffolk County with representatives. So we don't really have the kind of clout in that scenario to bring something meaningful. And I'm not sure if they actually understand, you know, that there is a certain, I know people don't look at us that way who live here, but there's a certain rural characteristic to this. We're not Brookline and we're not, certainly not New Bedford or Fall River. We're kind of smallish. And there's an awful lot of problems that we have to pay for. And I think one of them that we didn't mention is we've got eight uniform labor contracts that have all expired and they all need addressing at the same exact moment. So that creates a real difficult conversation in the budget part of this, not the agreement part. Jeff, you're there now.
Well, I am here. Thank you. And I'm certainly looking forward to hearing Anita and Pete's position on this. I don't really have a lot to say. Thank you both for being here. Thank all of you for being here. My position has been made perfectly clear for quite some time now. And what I'm looking for at the moment is a commitment of this, for this board to, to begin to act, to take the first step, maybe the second step, someone could argue. Mark, you had great ideas. Essex-Manchester, DY, you know, values, town, you know, Scott, you bring great ideas. We're not even there yet. We, we haven't even sat down as a board to discuss how to formulate what the school committee is actually looking for. So I think we're putting, putting the cart before the horse there. And, and lastly, I don't believe that we will be handing over a staple document. So I don't want us to look for a perfect document to hand over to the school committee or Chatham. This is not a staple document. It's not a one and done. That's why it, the, the case to be made for beginning this process back in May was so that we wouldn't be here today. We should be, in my opinion, a lot, a lot farther along than we are today, at least from a strategy position of this board. All the other, the hows and the whys, can't start without a commitment to multiple agendas having this conversation on it. So that's, that's what I have to say, at least for now. And we'll yield to my colleagues.
And again, I'll reference the conversation I had with Meredith. I really am not interested in having a conversation that throws something against the wall and see if it sticks. A lot of this is going to revolve around where Eric is, be, going to give us in terms of our real position at the moment and what it's likely to be over the next year. And we'll be far better informed about what it is we're really trying to say to you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a question to that point.
Yes, yes.
Is that what you heard by what I just said?
No, Jeff, but you were the one who went there in May. So, I mean, we're trying to move forward. I get it. But we need to have something to say before we go in front of the select board. That was a critical error to go in front of them and not have something in your hand that this is what we're looking for. This is what we are hoping to talk about. I'm trying to create that and we're, and that's why we're all here. So.
So your answer to my question is no.
The answer.
Not what you heard by what I just said.
The answer to your question is we are going to work together to try to go both through the budget and the agreement in a coherent way that has some actual things in it so that we can go armed with what our asks are. The why is only a part of that discussion. It really has to do with not just the why, but the how. What other agreements do work? What's analogous to our circumstances? What could be argued successfully in Chatham that this is how this would fairly distribute? You know, and here's some examples of that. We haven't had that.
Well, I, I agree with you and I think you would agree with me that it would require the chair to put this on the agenda, to begin that process. That's my only point.
You were the chair until June. So if there is fingers to be pointed. You were the chair until June, so if there is fingers to be pointed, let's stop it and start concentrating on where we want to go from here, not who it was who got the directions wrong in the first...
I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just asking for...
Well, you just were, so I'm gonna move on to Pete.
I'm sorry, I have the floor here, let me ask one more que...I'm just clearly stating that I am looking for a commitment to action from this board. Whether I was the chair in the past or not, you're the chair now, and if I'm hearing you right, what I'm hearing is you are making a commitment to put this on the agenda for us to begin the process.
And I'm making a commitment to put it on for a planned progress as opposed to just have a random discussion about it.
I wouldn't think anything different than a planned process and a strategy would be the only choice for this board, so thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Well, it probably won't shock anybody, I really don't agree with much of the narrative that's been going on so far tonight regarding this agreement. I don't believe the school board doesn't have a say in this. In fact, if anything, the school board has the greatest say. You folks are the ones who can decide to open or not open this agreement without any input from anybody else. So my argument would be that if any entity truly owns the agreement, it's the school board. I understand that it's the Harwich Select Board that's asking right now, right? I get that. And I think where my confusion comes in, and this is no disrespect to you folks in the school department or the school board, because I think you're simply looking for an answer and rightfully so, but I don't have a problem with articulating the why. You know, I think we've articulated the why, quite honestly, that some folks may disagree, but we can formally articulate the why to you folks. And I think we already seen the why started to develop, right? Last year, we asked you folks to trim your budget a little bit because it was a little, you know, too rich for what we could afford. That's what I foresee continuing to happen and to some previous speakers' comments, we don't want that to be the case, that all of a sudden there's an impact on the students, right? That's what we want to avoid, bottom line. So there's a variety of whys. We can give you what we think as a collective group, but I can certainly assume that there's folks out there who have other whys as to the need to move this thing forward. Again, my confusion comes down to, I put forward the motion to send a letter to the school board because I wanted to get the appetite of the school board. Are you willing to open the agreement? Period. I get that there's more to come, but I don't want it to be a unilateral decision by the Harwich Select Board. I want this to be a collaborative effort. And as much as I have no problem with this going on future agendas, the effort isn't this board.
Right.
We have experts, we have professionals that work for this town, which work for your school system. Those are the folks that I want to engage with all these great ideas that we've heard. I don't know which one's best. I don't know which one Chatham would have an appetite to listen to. I'm not supposed to know that. What I wanna know is, is the school board willing to have a conversation about opening the agreement? Because there's more than just the funding formula, right? We could talk about enrollments getting to a 78, you know, percent for Harwich, 22. Do we look at the makeup of the school board at some point? That hasn't changed to my knowledge, right? So maybe that's part of the discussion that has to take place. Maybe there's some additional language now that needs to change in there. There's a variety of things that could be discussed and I don't want us to narrow it down to one little thing or one objective or one proposal. I want a collaborative effort with Chatham, with the school board, with everybody, so that we can try to get to the end result that benefits the students, bottom line. So this isn't us, our high box stand, you know, we're tied to paying, you know, X, Y, and Z. There are people who do believe we're subsidizing the school system. That's fine, they can have that opinion. But the bottom line is we wanna take care of the students, we wanna make sure we don't get into a fiscal year where all of a sudden you folks are faced with, eh, slash $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 from your budget and don't impact the students' experience, right? That's not gonna happen if you ever have to get to that point. So we can bang on the table all day long about the whys. The reality is we need the agreement open so we can all work together to a solution. And that's why I keep banging my head as to the whys and the solution. The whys are out there, let's put it on paper, and then let's work collaboratively with the experts to the actual solution that works for all parties involved. Sorry, I'm gonna keep standing on this soapbox tonight.
That's fine, but there's a connection between what you just said earlier and about the COA and our capacity to pay for bonding.
Agreed.
This is the same discussion. There's only so much money that's capable in these households to be distributed and an awful lot of them are not as well off as everybody thinks they are, so...
100%, that's what I mean. It has to be a complete effort by all parties involved. This isn't just the Harwich Select Board or the Montemoy School Board or the Chatham Select Board, it's everybody. And we have some true experts in town with some financial acumen and some expertise in contracts that can help us get to where we need to be.
And I will say before I go to Anita that we have started that. I mean, Tony went and spoke with the superintendent, was it a week ago, a week ago Friday, I think?
Few weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And that was precisely the reason, is to start to get a discussion at a level that can actually effectuate some change as opposed to just listening to us all night. So Anita.
Okay. I guess I'm taking that...obviously you know I'm new to this board, so I'm learning a different side of government, so to speak. But I'm taking that this dialogue that we're having here tonight is in response to the letter that this board sent to the school committee. Am I correct?
In response to the letter and your meeting last week.
Okay, all right. The other question I have would be, is Chatham aware that this board has sent some concerns over they are, the Chatham Select Board?
Yes, so there were Select Board members that were at the workshop where we were talking about the regional agreement, so I think from both this board and from Chatham.
And I had a conversation over the summertime with Dean Nacastro also.
Okay, so...
And just to finally, one more point, I believe the letter we sent was copied to the Select Board, if I recall.
And this conversation didn't just start last spring.
No, I know.
So I think that all parties have been aware of what we're looking forward to, but I think to Peter's point, all of the stakeholders have to be at the table to have the conversation. Because we can't do it alone and although, you know, we're Harwich and Chatham representatives on the school committee, we are neutral parties, you know, we can't just stand next to Harwich because I'm a Harwich member and say, let's figure it out. But I think having Chatham, Harwich, and the school board at the table to have a fruitful discussion is the way we're going to get there, but we have to get to the table. So I think that by you sending the letter, the school committee created a goal around reviewing the regional agreement, so opening it, making sure that there's full transparency between both town boards and the school committee, and that's our commitment this year. We'll have our second reading and vote on those goals this Thursday, so stay tuned. But basically, we want to have this conversation too because the bottom line is the students. And so we don't want to get to a place where either town has to come to us and say, I'm sorry, we can't support your budget. So we would like to get to that table just as much as you all would.
Would it be helpful, just as a sheer question, would it be helpful if the school board answered the town of Harwich in response to our letter and copied the Chatham Select Board? So that way we kind of all can be on the same page and it's in paper. And then that way we all can move forward, hopefully, and I don't wanna be a Pollyanna and this type of thing, but I think we all can come to some type of an agreement. It would be very, I think, very beneficial if that school board wrote us a letter that in response to the letter that we had sent and also copied the Chatham, so that way we're all on the same page.
And I think we definitely can do that once we've voted on our goals because then it's a part of it, so...
That's fine.
Yep.
That's fine, but I think as long as we follow a paper trail, so to speak. And then that way we have everything there and then maybe, I don't wanna like, you know, we can all then come together and say, okay, this is what we said, this is what maybe Chatham may wanna write something, I don't know, but then this is what you've said and we've all got it here and maybe we can move forward with that. Does this make any type of sense?
Scott? Yeah. I was gonna say, you know, maybe this sounds Pollyannish too. But, you know, so before my 13 years here, I was 13 years at Lincoln Sudbury. And one of the things that happened differently there than here is there was a joint meeting, I believe almost every year, between the school board and both, you know, both Select Boards. There was just more sort of collaboration in the room. Now granted, at the time, they had been in a 50-plus-year marriage, you know, and I do think, you know, and I appreciate the conversation that started last year where there was, you know, a couple Select Board members from each room, but, I mean, from each town, but I think, I do think it would benefit everybody to have some joint conversations, like with the full boards. And I think if you wanna, you know, I think that's even more than a letter, that's bringing, you know, bringing folks together to jointly solve...
Right, but the letter would be...right, I'm sorry, but the letter would at least be, okay, we received your letter.
Yep.
And this is where our goals are, also copy. And yes, I think that would be a great thing, to try to bring everyone together in a room, but with no response to the letter that we...do you see where I'm going? With no response to the letter that we sent, it...we have something tangible in front of us saying, okay, now we understand where you are coming from, you understand now where we are coming from. And hopefully then the Chatham Board will get on board to where we all can meet. I like that idea.
And your response might actually include that you think it's a great idea for both whole boards to get together with the school committee in a joint meeting. That may be one outcome that I could suggest you bring back. So, but I see where Anita's coming from and I see where Pete's coming from. It's, in order for there to be more progress, we sent a letter, if we get a response to the letter in kind and it gets CC'd to Chatham, it's going to be viewed as there's something starting to happen so we can have a discussion. And I think that's an important thing. But Pete's probably right, too, we need technical people. I mean, it's kinda like signing a treaty that you negotiated yourself without any help. There's a lot of danger in that. And this agreement actually had some underlying assumptions that have proved not to be durable through the years. That's probably the discussion we need to have. It has to get back to, okay, who else is doing what else? So it's not just why, it's what and how. And I would love to be able to have that more granular discussion amongst the staff and finance director here, or Mr. McMillan and Scott, so that we can map out...it doesn't mean you're committing anything, but you can map out something that's doable as opposed to something that looks insane at first blush when the staff starts looking at it. Because the real answer here is we need some tangible progress, not just a whole bunch of meetings where people are talking.
Right.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
And thank you for coming. I told you I didn't expect an outcome other than we'll have a dialogue and I wanna continue to have that.
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you again. Tony?
No, I just wanted to mention that there's...
Not take a bait?
Sort of in diplomacy, there's always back channels going on. So, you know, we're getting together, I think in a couple of weeks with myself, Tom Mander from Chad, I'm Dr. Carpenter, and Mr. McMillan. So, you know, those, that part of it, while the boards are figuring out on the school committee, you know, we're still, because we know we have to put a budget together and so we're already communicating, you know, closely on that. And so that's, I think, another beneficial, you know, byproduct of, you know, the work that everybody's doing. So we're working on the back channels just to get as much visibility on where everybody's at, so...
Pete?
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate that. And the only other point, if you didn't scroll through the agenda tonight, we are talking about our budget statement to the town administrator. And once that's voted on and approved by this board, we'll make sure a copy is sent to the school board and the school administration.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, the acting town administrator and the interim finance director are gonna present the current financial assessment.
Eric, if you can grab the clicker from the desk, you can control it. So while he's doing that, I just wanted to just sort of give a quick preamble on what you're gonna see tonight. So the way their chart is written, this is the current year financial assessment, so I just wanna set expectations about the information that you're gonna receive here in a few minutes from Eric and I. We've been working very closely over the last 40 days on a lot of different things. This is gonna be some information about where we currently see ourselves in the FY26 process. But realize it's very early in the fiscal year, we only have, you know, roughly two months of information, but we do a lot of trend analysis looking at, you know, prior year efforts and how things came in and how that compares to this year. So Eric, we'll start things off and we're obviously ready to answer any questions on the information presented, but this is directed toward current year financial assessment. There'll be more presentations coming up in the next couple of months on different aspects of our financial performance, both past, current, and future.
So thank you for letting me, for hiring me and hiring our company. And just to let you know, Tony is great to work with. I never knew what the term cheer flying meant, now I do. So I appreciate that. So, you know, I wanna give you a sense of like the current financial assessment of where we're at right now, but just to let you know, in your office here, a new assistant town accountant started today. And you guys probably heard, like, Megan Green, she was fantastic, and she was, but we have our replacement. And first day today, seems like it's gonna work out really well with our formal onboarding plan, so I am happy about that. So when the finance department leaves one position left to be filled...
Yours.
Exactly. So I just wanted to let you know that. Like Tony said, this is early in the fiscal year, we ran these reports last week. I think the revenues only include July and August when we look at the revenues, we'll look at that. I think the expenses are through September 15th. Okay, so we are on track to close the books on September 30th. We tried to do it earlier, but, you know, I've worked with the treasurer today, we're , what do you call it, reverse engineering, that's the date, we're reverse engineering it back.
And before you go any further, Eric, I knew that and that's why I didn't wanna give you the 30th because I knew it was gonna be the 15th of October.
So it's fine, just to let you know, it's preliminary, we still have some stuff to do, but I think we're probably gonna end up in the same spot we were last year at the time, just to let you know, like, last year, the certified free cash was like 5.8 million. So I'm thinking that it's gonna be in that range when we close the books. So just to give you guys a sense of where we're at. So that's that, and I, with some of your feedback and Tony's help, I did, you know, we did create a few charts here. So the overview, general fund overview, so we're looking at a budget of 93 million. What we have, but only 83 million of it is the operating budget. This includes articles that people vote, so the whole 92 million is like $10 million worth of articles. So like this, there's roughly $5 million in unexpended articles from FY25 that are carrying forward, and there's about 5 million new articles in '26. So the total general fund budget is like 93 million, but about 83 million of that is the regular budget. So that's where we're at. We spent about 25% of that so far, and let me get this, right here, 25%. Thank you, blah blah, that's great. All right, so here we go. This account, as well as what I thought it was, it doesn't look as good on here, but basically, where does your money go? This is your budget. So we talked about this 40%, so 40% of that budget, $83 million is education right here. So we talked about that. 16% public safety, 10% public works, that's about, you know, almost, that's about two-thirds of your budget. Then you include employee benefits right there, it's 13%, and then some other stuff. So basically, your big three, and it's typical for every town, you know, public safety, public works, and education. And it's no different here in Chatham.
Harwich.
Harwich. Harwich.
Let's not forget...
Don't forget Chatham on the mind, Harwich, sorry.
Let's not forget where we are.
Well, I know, I'd have to, you know, dress a little bit better if I was in Chatham because it was equalized valuations a lot higher.
Just send them the bill.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, bud.
I guess Chatham was too Harwich anyway.
So, you know, what we did is did a little analysis based upon the budget, how much of the budget have we spent year-to-date? The regional school district, $31 million budget, 8.9 million, we're about 28% through that budget. That's probably just a function of how they wanna get the money. Then we got, obviously, like, the fire department, police department are up there, and you got the highway, and for some reason, the harbor master, every town that I'm in, the harbor master, I always... master always shows up doing something, but... So that's that. So where does the money come into play? Where's this money coming from? So there, see this? You were talking about property taxes. That's just real and personal property taxes right there. That's 74% of the budget's funded by this. And then this part up here, 21%, this is also taxes, but it's like excise tax, meals tax, investment income, that's the 21%. Very small portion of the budget is funded by state aid, like 1%. So I think this visually depicts where Harwich's budget comes from, just comes from people's property tax bills and excise tax bills.
And before you go on, I just want to make sure that the public actually understands, too. The enterprise part of that is not tax revenue, it is receipts from ratepayers going into the water, wastewater department.
Yeah, and absolutely, like, this enterprise fund budget, that's not part of this presentation. That's like a standalone, you know, enterprise fund receipt, yep, right. So that's that. And then we got, so the revenues to date, you know, the big revenues came, you know, 13 million so far, came from real estate taxes. We collected about 22% of what we need to in the budget. And just some interesting anecdotes, disposal area stickers, disposal regular stickers, disposal commercial, this is where we stand, like, budget to actual revenues. So Tony, the interim town administrator, we talked about this today, and that's what's going on there. But you look at it in context, it's good to talk about these transfer stations, but this is how much money that we're expecting from real estate tax to fund the budget here. And this small amount is how much these disposal fees are using to fund this budget. So it's a real small percentage.
Eric, can you just go back to the pie chart for a minute? I just want to...
Sure.
So I think, you know, one of the things that we're taking a close look at as it relates to revenue. So, you know, typically, and you'll see a little different way of us presenting what I call sources and uses when we look at building the FY27 budget. But typically, you know, for Proposition 2.5, right, our property taxes go up by 2.5% plus new growth, so remember the new growth piece. And then really, local receipts, right? So those are the two areas that we take a close look at in terms of, you know, how we want to estimate those various revenues, right? So new growth is new expected tax revenue that may come in with a, you know, major project that gets completed, and now we start collecting the tax revenue for that. A little bit of science, a lot of intuition goes into how that number is generated. And then on the local receipt side of things, again, all the components that make that up are the ones that we, you know, take a very close look at in terms of how we want to project forward on where we think those receipts will come in. Because when we look at the generation of free cash, when that number comes in, hopefully in mid to late October, we're going to have an analysis about what are the contributors to that, to do two things. One is sort of a check and balance about our revenue estimating skills and how we're looking at that, right? If what Eric said actually holds true, then we're in the five, you know, plus million-dollar range, and we look at the contributors to that free cash. One component will be revenue that come in higher than estimated. And then on the other side of the balance sheet, so to speak, are the expenses that came in less than budgeted, right? And so we'll take a close look at that to analyze both sides of the equation, the revenue side and the expense side. Again, to make sure that we're refining our revenue estimating skills. In this line of work, you take a conservative approach to that, but there is such a thing as too conservative. And so, we'll be taking a close look at that as we work to build our FY27 budget on that side. And then, again, look at the expense side of things in terms of what are the contributors there, and where are there potential opportunities for efficiencies, and perhaps different ways of doing things on the expense side within the different departmental budgets. So, this is the detail that goes behind these type of charts and pie charts, is where we spend a lot of time analyzing the data. And when I say that, some people call it data-driven decision-making, but they sort of don't really take it to the end result, where they look at data-driven decision-making, think the data's going to tell them all the answers, when the reality is, we look at the data, and it helps us to ask the right questions about why is the data presenting in a particular way? And as you drill down in it, that's where you end up finding either efficiencies, or you can refine your estimating skills to, you know, gain a little bit more on the revenue side. So that's just kind of a precursor, what's going on behind the scenes, as we continue to analyze not only our performance this year, but our expected performance and how we predict that going forward, and how we will present that to the board when we present our FY27 budget, so.
Yep. And to piggyback on that conversation, I know the town has to do a lot of borrowing in the future. So the bond rating agencies look at stuff like free cash and fund balances. They have, to be a AAA-rated community, they want these levels, a certain percentage, like, and how it currently has the reserves up to that percentage. It's one thing that you just want to be cognizant of. If you're too aggressive in your revenue forecast, and, which is, you'd be close to it, but it may not create the reserves that would warrant a AAA bond rating, it may go down to a AA bond rating. So that's something that the board would need to consider. Difference between a AAA and a AA is like, probably like 20 basis points on a 20-year bond, between 10 and 20 basis points. So, I know as a...
You haven't, just stop right there. Do you have any idea in numbers, how much outstanding debt we have that that would apply to?
Well, I don't have a specific example, but I know if...
It's not example, I'm just talking about in the aggregate, that kind of a shift is a major, it's a major responsibility.
Yeah, right. If it's a $20 million bond over a 20-year period, I think it would, over the course of 20 years, it would be like a $400,000 difference.
And we got a lot more than 20 million dollars out there.
Right, so, so that's it. So all these are factors that were considered...
The balance, yeah.
Yep, so that's that. And so, real estate taxes, we've got this. So basically, they always say in a presentation, tell them, you're going to tell them, tell them, and tell them again. So I guess we're going to tell you again. Real estate tax is the largest revenue source in the town that you have. You know, this disposal stickers, we talked about that. That visitor dockage was pretty interesting. We collected 50% of the budget. I didn't even know what that was, I learned that today. So that kind of makes sense. But the key to the whole thing, right now, where you say now, you're in a pretty good position right now, but right now, the degree of uncertainty is these collective bargaining agreements. Once we know how much those are going to cost, we'll be able to see what the effect is going to be on the current budget, and project out the FY27 budget. So did you say there's eight agreements? Eight, yeah. So that's the key. But I know you wanted, I just wanted guys to give you an idea of where we're at now as you negotiate these contracts. Once we have the numbers, we'll be able to figure out how we're going to pay for this year, if it's, if there's money that needs to be raised this year, we have to figure out how to pay for that. And then in addition, how's that going to project out to next year?
And just so everybody in the public understands, because eight may be a number just sitting out there in the ether, it doesn't necessarily resonate. Those eight union labor contracts represent the overwhelming majority of employment in the town.
Okay.
So there's very little that's not covered by the labor agreements.
That's true. And I think, you know, the reason I chose the word the trickle-down effect, right? If you think about it, future budgets are built on the foundation of the current budget. And with the uncertainty around the collective bargaining agreements at this point, we're going to start here soon with your budget message and the trickle-down from that and the specific direction of the departments, means we're starting to build the next year's budget on a less than stable foundation, right? And so, it's important that we recognize that. But at the same time, you know, dealing with uncertainty, it's part of our everyday life, because there's always uncertainty out there. But you still have to plan a path ahead, even when the path may be a little bit unclear, right? And so, so we'll be taking a lot of different factors into account as we begin the budget building process off of your message when it's approved and sent down to us. So hopefully, we make progress there. The firmer we can make our foundation, will give us that much additional confidence in how we're building the budget for next year, and that rolls into the forecast that we put together, that goes out three to five years after that.
And looking ahead to the FY27 budget, you know, there are, I'm glad you were talking about the schools, because, you know, no one with that number is going to be... It would be great if they could project out three, four, five years, like, what's Harwich's assessment going to be, so we can plan for the future. But when you think about it, you know, I think it was, you know, it could be like a 10% increase in their budget could be the $3 million to our budget. So that's important to know. And the other thing on the horizon is, I don't know how this is going to affect Harwich, but you've all been reading on like the health insurance premiums, like, it wouldn't surprise me if we had 10% increase. I don't know, that's just from reading the industry and so forth. So there are a couple of budgetary challenges for '27. But for '26, we're in pretty good shape, we're steady, we're conservative. And like, the key takeaway is, we've only monitored it for two months, we just got to continue doing that, like, Tony and I, every month, we're going to look at, after three months, we're going to keep monitoring to make sure we're meeting our revenue targets, to see if anything comes up, like aberrations or whatever, but...
And just to interject, I know Pete and I would like to have those as a routine report, as opposed of just being requested.
Absolutely. And I did attempt to, and I'll try to refine it, I'll ask for your feedback at a later date, but I took the data that we gave in the reports, and I did a little analysis. I got to tell you, I cheated a little bit. I put Adobe AI, and it pulled out, I did modify it once I got it, but it gave like a little trend analysis. So I don't know if that was helpful, if it was too much or enough, if you're looking for something a little shorter.
It depends on who programmed the AI.
But I know, as select board members, I know some of you asked, not just for the report, but actually a summary. So there was a verbal summary that was in the email. So it's an improvement, but I know if that's where you want to be, just let me know, and we'll continue to refine it. So when you get your monthly reports, you'll have a narrative, you'll have the hard data, but you'll have like a narrative. So you can get, I used to work for a guy when I was in Brady, he goes, "Don't send me everything", he goes, "There's nice to know and need to know." He goes, "I want you to point on every email that you give me, what do I need to know, and what's nice to know?" So you have to tell me what you need to know.
We are really big on multi-year projections.
Okay, okay.
Really big on this board.
Okay, so that's fine. And like I said, we're still early in the fiscal year, so as, you know, I don't know, I know it's not in your charter, I know this is part of your charter, but, I mean, before we do the budget, we could have the same type of presentation, like, in two months, same type of thing, we'll have more data, we'll be able to talk, you know. I think every, you know, every, you know, it's up to the board, but I think it is valuable for us to take this level of a look as we move along during the year, so I'll leave that up to you.
That's pretty much what we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're meeting the requirements of the charter today, but we can take charter plus.
Yeah, remember our discussion about free cash, so that...
Exactly.
So what the charter requires and is what we would like.
Right. So that's all I have as far as the presentation goes for tonight. There's some coming attractions, that Tony has a lot of ideas in mind for when we do the budget, and I look forward to working with Tony for that.
And the good news is, at this time last year, there was no presentation really that was in-depth. So I believe that wasn't until December that we got to that point.
That's right. It is improved, too.
We are following our promise to ourselves here, that we're going to make sure that the budget discussion is as coherent as possible and has as much information as possible.
Yep, so...
Pete?
You know, I'll thank you for the information, you know, kind of the way the conversation was just tailing off there. This is great information, but it's a snapshot in time.
Absolutely.
So, you know, your key takeaways are wonderful, except, where were we in FY23 and '24 with disposal stickers or visitor dockage at this time?
Right, right, yep.
You know, maybe 50% is wonderful, or maybe we're trailing by 25%.
That's right.
I have no idea. So, good information, but I need some historical perspective to understand how we're trending, and if it's good or bad.
Good feedback.
Anita?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thanks for the report, and thank you for the munis, rather than just getting a plain munis, a little explanation, that's very helpful. The only thing, you were here to hear us talk with the school committee, anything you could do to help the town administrator to maybe graphically show where we're at, I think would be very helpful when we deal with the school committee and the select board.
And I don't know what the overriding goal of like the agreement is, but to me, it's the probably overriding thing is that you feel that you're paying too much, and Harwich is paying too little based upon students and value. So you need to concrete a proposal, something, something in a formula that would effectuate that equity. So, I don't know, what lever you'd have to push, or whatever, would make sense, but that's basically all you're looking for. You know, if you had a proposal that says, all right, we're going to use the regular formula, but then Chad is going to pay an extra $400,000 for this other equity, you guys probably would go, or whatever it is, but, yeah, it does have to be something like tangible, saying, "We want to make the amended agreement to do this, and make sure that will effectuate what you're looking for," so...
And it's not what we feel, it's the pie chart. I guarantee you that if we saw the Chatham pie chart, the percentage of expenditures that go to schools is not as big and robust as ours. So it's, and hate equity is a comment, because that talks about irrespective of the circumstances, we want to achieve a final result. I think it's more like equality in terms of where we're at as a town, and where our capabilities are. So, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask, Eric, and thank you for being here, it's always a pleasure to listen to you go through your narrative. Just, whatever you send to any of the other board members, I'd like to be on the list to get as well.
Absolutely. Yep, and I'll talk to Tony about the right protocol, if anybody, whatever, whatever protocol you, you're actually my board member's...
All the board members.
So if one gives, so if I get a request from one, I'll just give it to all, is that directive?
Let the whole board get it.
All right, that's great.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks again, Eric.
All right, thank you.
And next time I ask you for a date, I'll make sure I...
You've got a task, master.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
I'm sorry, there was a whole bunch of stuff that was going on in proceeding this. So we're at the point of, that I've done and drink requests. The only question I have is, before we make any kind of a motion, are you essentially promising acoustic entertainment, or are you just saying you're going to try to do that, because you kind of penciled it in?
No, I was under the impression that to continue with the liquor license outdoors, we had to apply for live entertainment. I'm not doing any live entertainment, I don't plan on doing any live entertainment.
You do, but this has to do with where the guardrails are, is how far we're going to allow that to go, whether that's electric and amplified, or it's just acoustic. So basically, you're saying, you're not planning on doing anything, and if you did, it would probably be acoustic, is what...
If we did in the future, it would probably just be a one-person acoustic, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the space, we don't have a lot of space over there.
Okay. Any questions from other members?
Is this an update to the license?
Yes, we have three different things. So one is the common vic license, one is the entertainment license, and then there's what's called an alteration of premise for them to be able to use the, I'll call it a wraparound, a deck on the outside.
Right, but are the two licenses that we're dealing with tonight...
Are the existing licenses?
Three, three different things.
No, no, agreed, I'm talking about the common vittler and the entertainment license. Are those modifications to existing licenses?
No, these are new.
So these are new licenses, and that, just bear with me, so these are just kind of before us now, even though the establishment's been opening?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a reason they weren't before us prior to the establishment opening?
I wasn't here then. When did you open, was it July or June?
We opened on June 30th. It was explained to me that it was an oversight by the town.
By the town?
Yes.
That I can't confirm or deny, I don't know, but...
Any further explanation as to? No, that was the best you heard. So do you know when you... So do you know when you?
I believe it was because, so the, the initial lady I was dealing with on the licenses left and then Jennifer took over.
Yeah, but I think there was, there was quite a bit of communication though with her and, and the establishment though through June and July to try to get this cleaned up. But, um, you know, where the communication broke down, we're not, I'm not sure, but there was quite a bit of communication and talking to Jen going back and forth.
And the bigger answer to your question, because this is, this is only part of our problem right here, for next year, you absolutely need a Vittler's license to be able to serve anything. So if you don't see it come and come in and ask for why it hasn't happened, and I see that likewise to people who are trying to close, who have annual licenses. Last year, we got, uh, how should I put this? Played a little bit by some people who were like closed and then asked for permission to close later. Uh, I'm just using this as the opportunity to say, if you've got a license and you intend on closing for alterations, you need permission. You can't just do it. Uh, and to Pete's point, you can't just operate saying, "Well, nobody asked me." There is a protocol, I mean, it's in any town. Common Vittler's license is necessary for you to serve anybody, any food. So going forward, understand that because it's your obligation to be able to get that before the license period is up.
Yeah, like I said, there was quite a bit of communication. Again, I don't know where the, when there was information, we were still waiting to get in. So we just now got everything, I think, that we needed. So Jen keeps a pretty tight, tight rein on that, um, part of the process, so.
And I don't know.
As an oversight necessarily.
I don't know which or what is, is possible for future requests, not from this individual, but from, from all. But perhaps there could be a simple date on the request from the applicant, but also I assume the office still stamps when documents received?
You mean the date time stamp?
Well, I don't know if it's daytime, but date stamp.
Receipt stamp.
Yeah. So perhaps going forward, that's the copy we could have in our packet.
Yep.
So, I don't know, again, I don't know.
I don't know if they stamp them.
So it's an exercise for you to walk through.
If they don't, they should.
Yeah. Now, whatever the exercise is, you can walk through with the team would be great, but just so we add, uh, greater clarity on, on these applications.
That's just the lecture portion of this. I'm all set.
I have nothing.
Anyone else?
Sure. Nicole, um, did you, did you add 28 additional seats with the porch?
Yes.
Okay. And that wasn't there before, that's?
Correct.
Nope, okay. Any problems with the neighbors?
No, none.
No complaints or anything?
No.
Okay, great.
And the board of health counts that as part of your seating capacity?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Probably one by one?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the following new license applications for B&amp;B Company, LLC DBA Dive, Dine and Drink located at 986 Route 28. Annual Common Vittler's license, annual weekday entertainment, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. inside and outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, acoustic. Annual Sunday entertainment, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. inside and outside, radio, television, live recorded music, acoustic. Do you want me to keep going with these?
Uh, no, somebody make a second, we can.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the three licenses as enunciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an alteration of premises application, outdoor only for B&amp;N Company LLC DBA Dive, Dine and Drink located at 986 Route 28.
I'll second it if nobody else will.
I was looking at Mark because I thought Mark was.
Seconded.
Okay. It's moved and seconded by Mark, uh, to approve the alteration request. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Chair?
Yep?
Sorry, I was multitasking. I see the application in, in the packet. What I don't see similar to the license, uh, damn, just went away. I assume this went before any town entity that needed to sign off on it?
Yeah, it has to go through all the departmental reviews.
Yeah. I just, on the apps, I see that sign, that document that's signed off, however. I don't see it on this particular request, but unless I'm overlooking it.
In order to expedite this, we can have that discussion at the agenda meeting tomorrow about how, because I understand where Pete's driving this to, it's more of a, a staff conversation, we can just let them know what we're expecting to see.
Yeah, I see several that are signed off by the staff.
Yeah, I don't see that particular one.
You're talking about the alteration of premise?
Yeah.
But again, I think we can solve that tomorrow, but what the expectation is that you can give your staff because we're not, we're not telling them. You, you have to. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further, further discussion?
Yeah, and I understand where you're coming from, so I'm going to keep going with it. So with that point, uh, I'd like to amend the motion to include, you know, I'm great at this on-the-floor amendment stuff, um, that, um, however we want to phrase it, but essentially that the various town departments have signed off on this.
So based, if you would like to change the motion, based on the recommendations of the relevant boards.
And signatures of all relevant, relevant boards.
And commit, and staff.
Regulatory and staff.
Beautifully said. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was your second, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. So hearing, this is my third shot, hearing no more comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Please, if and when you do get to the point of the entertainment, just come in and let us know that that's going to be happening because we're, we're ending here with the assumption that you wanted it because you kind of felt you might need it, but love to know if you're going to actually exercise it.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry to make you wait so long. All right. And he was, at the request of Tom Blute, I think, we have a dedication ceremony that's going to be held on the Muddy Creek Bridge on October 4th. You're being asked to approve a proclamation for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the proclamation for the Muddy Creek Bridge dedication to Private Joseph Conrad Blute. Dedication ceremony to be held October 4th, 2025 at 10 a.m.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a proclamation for the Muddy Creek Bridge dedication. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
That's a great local family.
It is. Terrific family and it's wonderful that we're able to give them some support with this. Tony?
Yes.
Since you were largely involved in this discussion, the Affordable Housing Trust appointment process, would you like to delve into that murky subject?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we covered it the last time. This was the backup, I think, documentation for that. So there were a couple of things we were trying to work our way through. One was just to make sure that the understanding around Master General law, chapter 44, section 55, 55C that established a trust, which then flowed to a town meeting vote, which then flowed down to the actual creation of the declaration of trust, were all consistent with, with the law. So in my conversations with town council, that answer came back as, as yes. And I think sometimes when we, when we're reading particularly in Master General law, I was trying to understand the intent behind the words that are there. And so I worked with Amy Questle to kind of work our way through that. And so from the top level view, the creation of the trust and the flow-down documents as it relates to the town administrator being on it, um, having a vote and then in the trust to actually be the, be the chair, was none of it's inconsistent with, with the law. So that's, that's part one. The second part of that really had to do with the appointment process in that through Master General law, the, the select board is the appointing authority for the five trustees, right? And that is also articulated in the town meeting vote and also in the, in the trust documents, so. But as part of that, if the town administrator is going to assign that responsibility to a designee, then the select board also is the appointing authority for the designee, right? So, um, and I think as she articulated in her memo, if you will, her opinion was that the reason, the reason for that is to make sure that the, the board had the ability to appoint all five members, whoever, whoever was actually going to, um, you know, sit in the, in the chair. And I think if you take it one step further from a legality standpoint, certainly as a town administrator and you have assigned a designee, but your name is listed on the, the declaration of trust, which should be kept up to date with who is actually there. I don't know if I feel comfortable with that, having somebody else in the room, but my name's on legal documents and vice versa, whoever the designee is, should have their name actually on the trust document, so the decisions they're making inside of the trust are backed up by valid legal documents as a, as a trustee for the, for the trust. So, um, so that was really it. She did give some examples of.
Two more issues that you didn't cover.
What's that?
There are two more issues that you didn't cover along with the conversation. First one is that any town administrator, not just you, but any town administrator has the right to refuse the appointment and that came out of the discussion.
That's true.
We cannot mandate that you serve.
Right, that's true.
And, and we're not making the designation, we are making the confirming vote.
Confirming vote, okay.
And that came out of the town meeting article. It actually specifically said, "Five members shall be appointed by the select board."
Correct. So that all being said, um, you know, I think at, at this point, um, you know, is now the process of how do we get the trust back, you know, up to, up to full, full strength, right? And I think, you know, from my perspective, irrespective of, of some of the comments we heard at the podium about what we're trying to be told to do, is the reality is for me, right, as, as a professional in this, you know, position and as an executive, if I'm going to appoint somebody to carry my name forth on a, something as important as our Affordable Housing Trust, it's going to be someone I'm going to interview, talk to, get an understanding about, um, how they, how they view the Affordable Housing Trust, their background and whatever, so that when I make that recommendation to this board to appoint this person, you know, on my behalf, that I'm presenting you with someone that, you know, I'll say has been, you know, fully vetted and is going to, you know, carry forth. And I would expect whoever that person is, is in communication with me during the course of, of their duties, because again, they're operating as an extension of myself. So how do we do that? To me would be for me to, you know, solicit, um, people that may be interested in, in holding that seat, because you remember that person's also likely going to function at a, as the chair of that. And so, you know, to me, that's, you know, that's the process you use. If I get one or more applicants, we sit down and we have a conversation about that and then, you know, whichever person I think would best represent myself and the town on the trust comes before the board for, you know, an affirmation, you know, vote for appointment as a trustee. So that's something I can, you know, do fairly easily in terms of getting, you know, getting that out, out there, um, you know, probably for, you know, two weeks, lack of a better, you know, timeframe to give folks an opportunity to hear about and potentially consider being a, you know, member of the, of the trust.
And to the comments that I made about getting, becoming confused because KP Law continues to have more than one opinion on the same subject, depending on what lawyer you're talking to. Katie Klein, it's interesting you brought this up. Katie Klein had alluded to the signatories that are on file, uh, at the registry of deeds, implying that there's no real need to do that. That was not the, the feeling that we got from the other two lawyers, that you need to keep the trust document up to date in the registry so that it is the current signatories because they are, and I believe you're going to make that presentation of them at some point, they are fiduciaries, they are financially responsible.
They are.
So you have to name them. It can't just be five people. So.
Yeah, I mean, they can sign, you know, buy and sell property, there could be sign, you know, purchase and sale agreements and, and all of that. It needs to be backed up.
They have to be on file there as having that authority.
Authority, correct. So that would be my plan, um, if the board is, has any comments about that or wants to, you know, make any inputs on whether that's a good way to go or not. But to me, that seems fairly straightforward, be the quickest opportunity to get the, you know, trust back up to full strength. I did meet with, um, with Brendan and Bob Spencer and mentioned that it, that was what I was going to bring to the board to try to get their fifth, you know, member appointed.
And for, before I turn this over to the board, for some reason, they have this feeling that there is no way to get an article put together for town meeting to try to clarify this and maybe, maybe have this, uh, an appointment of five members where the organization is subject to a vote of the, from amongst its own members picking a chair or vice chair or a clerk and possibly having a non-voting presence of the town administrator. That is not, it is not true that that's not possible.
No, it is possible and I think she, you know, outlined, because that was one of the other.
That's the ultimate fix.
That was one of the other questions, should there be a desire to, to change the, the trust and some of the wording? I think just, you know, generally speaking, because we're in a usual situation now with an, you know, an interim town administrator and, and all of that, I always, I always try to tell myself, have flexibility, right? Have flexibility that you can, you know, make the best decisions, whether it's for the organization or whatever. And what we see in a lot of the trust stuff is, you know, will, shall, right? Those don't give you really any, any flexibility, um, because it could be a situation like we're in now that might have been, you know, if, if it was anticipated, a little bit easier way of, of working our way through this than what we have to do now, but.
But I don't want to confuse anybody, the articles, one, one thought, getting them up to full strength is still our objective right now.
Yes, it's two separate things. You're right, you're correct. Two separate things. We need to get the trust up to full strength and, you know, whatever the discussion and desire of the, the board and the trustees on potentially, you know, changing the, the town meeting vote and the makeup of the trust.
So to be clear, so the board knows what's going on. You are going to reach out to, to see who it is that might be interested in being a candidate. You will interview them and then you will bring forward your choice to us, for us to either confirm or not.
Correct.
Okay, and you anticipate how long you might think?
Well, I was going to try to put the word out there, you know, I, I got to find out what the best, you know, way, one may be the newspaper.
Happen to have a reporter.
Yeah, which would be great.
Pretty close.
You know, we'll put it up on the, the town's website, we can probably put it out through the old timers or, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we get, you know, use whatever means possible to.
And by all means, they should continue moving forward because it's, when they have three members in a meeting, they, they need to continue to meet.
Yeah, I don't want to tell them how to do the thing, but they certainly can, can, yeah, continue to meet, sure.
Okay. Board members?
No, no comment.
Pete?
Stick with the theme tonight.
You're going to yell at me again, aren't you?
No, I haven't yelled once, but I actually totally disagree with this. I don't, I don't think Tony should be investing any time with the, the trust or seeking an interim replacement for his seat. I understand that the, the trust is down to four people and I understand that we brought this before us a week or so ago. It, it was somewhat concerning when I heard that the chair has spent an extra 12 to 15 hours a week over the other board members. To me, if a chair without a specific, um, project, meaning assigned to them, is spending an extra 12 to 15 hours a week over other board members, and this is a problem with the construction of that group and not the people, I'm saying the way the, the, the trust is structured. Honestly, in my opinion, the TA should not be on the trust. I would love to see us bring this to town meeting and this particular upcoming town meeting. In a minimum, to a point that was raised a few minutes ago, there should be no chair assigned by the documents. That has limited what the current four members are able to do. However, I would argue that they could certainly pose for a reorganization if needed to appoint a different vice chair if the time constraints have impacted the current vice chair. But again, my opinion is, we've tasked Tony with a lot of things right now, we're about to lose an assistant town administrator. For him to even invest, you know, a few hours in interviewing folks and making a recommendation to us for a person that's going to sit on that board for potentially, you know, 10, 12 weeks, I think it's a waste of his time, and no disrespect to the trust, I just think it's a waste of Tony's time and what we're paying Tony to do. And I'd like to see us move in the direction of changing the way it's constructed and getting something achieved at this upcoming town meeting.
Permanent fix scenario. Anita?
I guess I was just under the impression that this would just be a part-time fix, just so the trust could go on if Tony could just appoint someone just for a few weeks. But I don't know if that's the will of the board. But yes, I would like to see it fixed, so that way it would be more cohesive, I think, for having five members and getting the town administrator out of being the chair of it.
Mark?
I have no comment.
Jeff?
Well, my position is where it's been. We have a person who was the chair, was doing the work of the chair. To Pete's point, the reason the current chair is doing 12, 13 hours' worth of work is because he's getting brought up to speed with what the previous chair walked away from. The easy fix, to not overcomplicate this, which I believe we've done, would be to have the town administrator appoint Larry Valentine. Then the trust can operate as it's been. And then, lastly, sure, I think we can go before town meeting and clean up the language. I'm not looking for a temporary fix, I'm looking for a chair of the housing trust at this critical time, and Larry has the time, he's already demonstrated that. Brendan does not have the time, Bob Spencer's done a heck of a job, we're piecing it together the best we can with the amount of work that this trust has to accomplish. So to not overcomplicate it, the town administrator could certainly appoint Larry Valentine. Then town meeting, we can fix the language. And Mr. Chair, I don't know who gave you the impression that the trust doesn't feel like we can get, like we have enough runway to get-
Brendan.
Okay, well Brendan's online, he can speak to that if he'd like, but thank you, that's all.
Brendan, you can object if you want to, but I believe I heard you both in the meeting and then later on saying that you didn't think it was possible to amend the agreement in this town meeting.
Don, I was just suggesting, if it was even possible, with, you know, Tony being, Mr. Skavie being temporary and then a new person takes over, whether or not the trust docs need to be changed or not, you know, I think at this point, it goes back to what Jeff just said, what Mr. Skavie said, there's a pathway that, and I thank Tony for his due diligence in getting everything together to find an appointment. It would be great to have a fifth member, as you know, there was a lot of work, especially with what's going on with Penrose and other things as well. So one thing I'm going to say tonight is that I wish that we could just get someone as soon as possible. I think we need the person, and whatever you can do to expedite that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thanks. And I'm going to amplify what Pete had said, and I think that, you may be missing this, Jeff. For the current chair, or the prior chair, putting the current chair in a position where he has to do a lot of catch-up concerns me in an open meeting law scenario, because it's not really possible that the chair should have deep knowledge that none of the other members have. I mean, it is, after all, a public body, so they all should be in a position. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, there's two things going on here too. This is Tony's designation, it isn't Brendan's, it isn't Jeff's, it isn't mine. We can vote to confirm, but we need somebody that's sent forward, number one. Number two, we managed for 11 months to have a trust that had four members on it, and we bought the Marseline property during that period of time. It's not that you can't do anything, it's just that it's more difficult on the other four members to be able to pull things off. I'm hearing what Tony's saying, I'm just waiting for a recommendation. If he wants to make one, then he can make one, because there's two different diametrically opposed positions on the board. The way I view this, it comes right down to, there's one person that's referenced in that document that has the authority to make a designation, and it isn't any of the five of us. We can confirm that, but we're not the ones who are making the recommendations, so hopefully we can see if there's somebody that sticks out in your mind, but Pete's right, that appointment could be made and it'll evaporate in maybe 90 or 100 days, and then we're back where we started.
Mr. Chair, you got a virtual hand up there.
Mr. McCaskill?
No, no, Brendan.
No, I think it's-
Top left of the-
Yeah, but Michael's down in the bottom right.
Oh, there's Mike, I didn't see Michael.
Yeah, he kind of came into the room.
Two virtual hands.
Okay, well, let's start with Michael, and then we'll wheel back to Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this conversation is very interesting, and I'll tell you that, serving on the board for 10 years and being part of the trust documents as that we voted them, and Don, you and I approved in several board meetings, and then again on town meeting floor.
One meeting.
And you say whatever you want, we talked about a heck of a lot-
No, it was four minutes in one meeting, but go on.
Yeah, I'd be there to debate you if I could, but you can debate me online as much as you want. What I'll debate tonight is, we're paying a gentleman $240,000 a year, an unprecedented amount of money, to make decisions, and decisions outside of the world according to Don with his three votes of the board. I don't understand, as somebody that served for the town of Howard for 10 years, how Mr. Skavie does not have the ability to at very least appoint the gentleman that has served as chair for the past few years and has moved the needle forward on affordable housing with no interruption whatsoever, with no outbursts, with no anything, and listen to the guy that was removed as chair because of what the trust document said. And would urge Mr. Skavie to look at the optics of this alongside of what has not transpired, any controversy with Larry Valentine whatsoever, and give the trust the tools they need to operate efficiently, until which time he can go through his vetting process. I've watched this for the last few meetings, and it seems to be being controlled by you, Don, Mr. Chair, somebody again who was removed as chair because of what the-
As a matter of fact, I resigned, I did not get removed, Michael.
It is my time, you will not interrupt me.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're still chair?
It is my time.
Way to go, Michael, still personalizing everything even though you're not on the board any longer.
It is my time. World According to Don needs to stop, and for the rest of this board, and for everything that's going on, and for the two newly-elected bobbleheads, we have a chair that has served and served gracefully for this town, and this is nothing more than an extension of your political agenda. Mr. Skavie owns the appointment or owns the seat. Now, the revolving legal opinions, Don, I'll go back to other legal opinions that we've had that contradict your newest legal opinions. So stop the political games because you were removed, and allow Mr. Skavie and give him direction as the newest leader of this town to make a decision outside of you. Larry Valentine served with dignity, he has done a great job, it's time to allow him to continue. And as you've said to many, many, many people in this town, including the chair, the current chair of the housing trust, that I will do you no favors. Your game needs to end.
Are you finished?
This decision, easy decision that you've gotten yourself in the middle of by way of conflict, which I absolutely, Don, plan to bring forward with everything else that you were doing, and every open meeting law complaint, and your directives to the person that you walked in this door as you've said to me, just let the trust act independently as town meeting voted until which time it doesn't, instead of directing the town administrator to do anything.
It's good to hear from you, Michael. Brendan?
Fortunately, it's not good to hear from you.
Well, you can crawl back into the room. Brendan?
Yes, just some clarity. So, Don, Mr. Howard, just some clarity with regards to Tony's appointment. Can you deny that? I want to make sure I'm hearing that correctly, I mean, you shall appoint, whether it's the town administrator or his designee. So when Tony selects his designee, is that going to be, you know, a 5-0 vote and it's, you shall appoint, or can you not appoint? Just for clarity.
I suppose we reserve the right to reject a particular candidate, but this was Lauren Goldberg. I may be a lot of things in this role, but I'm not powerful enough to tell the managing partner of KP Law what to tell us.
Yeah.
The bottom line is, she's the one who brought up the scenario that the town administrator can deny the appointment himself, and that we always had to be confirming that, and that would have happened under prior chairs too. But we didn't, at that point in time, have the current legal opinions that we have. And I don't force-feed anybody anything, this is where we're at. This is what the legal opinion was, we got one from Katie Klein, we got one from Amy Questle, and then we got one from Lauren Goldberg in conjunction with Amy Questle.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll address a couple of the comments. First and foremost, no one has told me who to appoint or not. So I don't know if anybody's getting the idea that Mr. Valentine can't be my designee. If he walked in the door, I would recognize him, but I don't know. And what I said stands, no one is going to tell me who to appoint that carries my name or represents my office. Period, dot, end of story, okay? It's non-negotiable. And the day that happens is the day, it's my last day, okay? So that's just the reality of it. I'm not going to appoint somebody until I have a chance to talk with them, to understand what their goals are, what their background is, what their view is of the trust and the things that are important to this town as it relates to affordable housing. And I'm not going to do it because somebody told me to do it. And I can say with, out of equivocation, the chair has not told me, "Don't appoint Larry Valentine, you cannot appoint Larry Valentine." That conversation has never happened. It never will happen, right? If it's my appointment, it's my appointment, okay? Now, the board gets their way in at that point. So what people may think is going on is not going on, okay? That's all I have to say on that.
Okay, so we'll wait for your recommendation then.
Please.
All right, moving along.
Brendan?
Brendan, you understand, Larry can apply, I have no skin in this game at all.
Who's excluded?
But as you heard, it's a fiduciary and it is the selection of the town administrator, he has to be comfortable with whoever that recommendation is. Inheriting somebody is not the same as him making a recommendation, he may make that recommendation ultimately. I can't, I'm not going to try to be in that position to say yea or nay. The only thing I'm going to do is vote on whoever is brought forward, because we needed to confirm this person, and it was in the town meeting article all along that we had to confirm five people.
Don, could I-
Yeah, sure.
-come in?
Sure, Brendan.
So I agree with everything Mr. Skavie said, I think if he's putting his name on it, it's going to be his designee. I have no problem with him interviewing and going through his process, I think that's, I have zero problem with that. As far as the trust docs being changed in the future, I don't see a need to do that, but that's a longer discussion, and I would definitely invite the select board to reach out to the trust, maybe we do a joint meeting and have all of our members, maybe we just hash it out and talk about the checks and balances of why I think the town administrator or maybe other board members may think so. So just something to think about, but I'd like to do it together if we can, and that's about it, thank you.
Sure, and I promise you, we can put that together.
Mr. Chair, one more quick question, if I could, to throw you to the town administrator. Tony, thank you for that. I think you hit the bullseye, if you're going to put your name on it, you should do your due diligence, and I respect and appreciate that. There was mentioned a meeting or two ago regarding the interview committee also being part of this process, and I'm just trying to get an understanding as we move forward. I didn't hear interview committee tonight, I heard it two weeks ago, is the interview committee part of this or not?
That's not his discuss, you really want to address me.
Yeah, that's not mine.
I had thought as a matter of process, now I've been, I know you've had different feelings, I'm not married to that, but generally, we have an interview committee recommendation for any appointment that we make. This is somewhat different insofar as, it's more like picking a department head, where Tony comes in with something, and we either vote for it or we don't vote for it. So I'm not married to that at all. I mean, but I said what I said because the process for all appointments generally is that it goes through the interview committee, and I wasn't going to try to cut you guys out.
Don, perfect. And I would agree, I think it can go from his appointment to this board.
And if you need to agree that that's fine, then I'm fine too. I have no interest in making this more bureaucratic.
Right, right.
Okay, so again, this rests on Tony making a recruitment and having some discussions with people so that he can make a designation that he feels comfortable with. All right. The assistant town administrator recruitment process.
There we go.
We should just leave that as an open item, recruitment process four.
So we talked about it a little bit last week, and certainly the charter gives me, you know, the authority to hire an assistant, obviously we're in a little bit of different environment, knowing that we'll have a permanent administrator at some point in the future, still probably several months away. And so, you know, I think I mentioned, there's two schools of thought on that, do you let the person coming in make that choice, or do we make it now? I think, again, I didn't do any data collection on this, but I'd say in most instances, when a new town administrator or town manager comes onboard, the office is set. In other words, if there is an assistant, they're likely there. It's probably more uncommon than not that you'd have both positions empty, and so it becomes a factor of time and the work that we need to do and all of that. If you figure, you know, your new administrator is here, if the search is successful sometime in January, they get their feet on the ground, they started the recruitment then, you know, it could take 60 days, if not longer, to get an assistant in. And so now you're looking at not having somebody in the second chair for arguably another, you know, potentially six or maybe even seven months. Now, with change comes opportunity, and so one of the things I think the board may want to think about is, you know, now's the time to look at the job description, right? And perhaps consider whether the current setup that we have is the right one for, I'll say, the second chair and the, you know, executive office in the corner. So there's an opportunity to do some of that now, if the board wanted to have a discussion about what they think they would like to see in the setup for the assistant town administrator, and how it fits into the, you know, executive leadership with the town administrator, perhaps a little bit different than maybe it is, you know, currently. So that in and of itself can take a little bit of time to sort out, so I don't know what anybody's feeling is about that. Certainly throughout my almost 40 years in leadership-type positions, I always had a second, right? And so I have my particular views about how that position should look, perhaps a little bit different than how we have it set up here now, but I just don't know if that's, you know, too big of a, you know, something to take on at this point, and we'd rather just, you know, get the position filled and perhaps, you know, talk about those type of things, you know, later. So I throw that out there, I'm certainly willing to get the recruitment going and started, if the feeling is we should get somebody in sooner rather than later, not delay.
Can you lay your hands on a position description that's more analogous to what you think we should be recruiting against?
Yeah, I talked to HR today and asked them to start pulling some of that stuff, some of that stuff together. I looked at the current job description, it's kind of, it's kind of light in a lot of respects, in terms of the way I would actually view it, and there's not a lot of meat into it in terms of the level of responsibility and that sort of thing, so it needs some work regardless. But yes, I can get my hands on some additional, you know, job description that may-
For next week?
For next week, we can certainly try.
Is that amenable to everybody?
It's fine.
I don't want to delay this too long.
No, I understand.
As you point out, it's kind of, it's more than just a sidekick. It's always been my concern that if we have a remaining vacancy in that office administration and we don't have a plan to fill in for the person who's missing, then it's an awful big ask for whoever the one is who's left to pick up the two jobs at the same time.
Yep, I get it. Yeah, I'll try to have that for Monday, but it'll be soon.
Okay. So we'll leave it at that, guys? So we'll leave it at that, guys?
Yeah, I'm open to the idea of, you know, like you said, taking, taking this as an opportunity and see if we can tweak that. You know, obviously, I think Tony's point of the job description was light, so it wasn't mirroring the actual day-to-day activities of our current assistant town administrator. So at a minimum, we mirror those up a little bit closer, but perhaps, you know, it becomes a little bit higher level, you know, C-suite than it is today.
Okay. Well, we'll leave it at that, then. So we'll hear more.
All right.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
A move that we authorize the chair to sign, the authority to file regarding the Harwich Stormwater Asset Management Plan, and if this is an acronym, I don't know what it stands for. CWSRF 12515, closeout. Comprehensive wastes.
Yeah, comprehensive wastewater.
Yeah, essentially, it was, was a project we got SRF funding.
State revolving fund.
There you go.
Water revolving, state revolving fund.
That's close enough.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Somebody second.
I was waiting to hear some more acronyms, so yeah, second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. What we didn't do last week was we disclosed the members, but you got them out there. And we can do this one of two ways. I was assuming that we just vote to accept the five recommendations as a, as a motion. If anybody wants to make them one by one, that's fine, too, but it would take three votes to reject them, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint the town administrating, town administrator screening committee members as Jack Maun, Jay Duncanberry, Norm Clark, Karen Dusset, and Sandra Hall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jack Maun, Jay Duncanberry, Norm Clark, Karen Dusset, and Sandra Hall as our screening committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jack Maun as the chair of said committee.
Second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded to designate Jack Maun as the chair of this screening committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Now, the budget guidance, just one thing. I believe, except for the one sentence that has, that's in the capital plan, that Pete's, that it's capture what you were saying.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Yes.
I'm willing to accept them as part of the budget message itself, so we can incorporate that into the final document. The only thing I'm going to say is about the capital thing, to the extent that they submit a capital request to the capital outlay committee, it is not normal for the department head to designate where the funding will come from. That's the kind of decision that gets made by capital outlay and then us.
That's why I changed, that's why I edited that.
Okay. But you added the, the words that identify. Are you wedded to that because?
No, no. I, I read the draft as, "All departments will submit capital budget requests with funding sources and justification." To me, that means the department will be sending the select board the funding sources. My edit was simply, it, it stepped back from that to just allow the departments, if, if the board feels comfortable, to just provide a recommendation. And maybe I read the draft incorrectly, but...
Yeah, I didn't intend to...
Do you see what I'm saying where that? Number three.
How about suggested?
Sure. Suggested, recommended, anything.
All departments were, departments will submit a capital budget request with a suggested funding source. Does that work for you, Tony, or with a potential?
Well, no, I don't...
With a potential.
So, so I've been talking to the cap, so the, the capital plan for the coming one, which is FY '27 to '31, will have recommended funding sources. I don't necessarily think that department heads should be making that decision unless they either have a special revenue fund or something where they're recommending a portion of that special revenue fund to be either fully or partially funding a project. That would be helpful for me, since most of it is going to come either from, you know, free cash or, or what have you. That's really not a decision that department heads are making, but it'll be included in the plan when you get it. You'll be able to see the recommended, you know, funding sources for any of the, the projects that we have listed in the year one of the plan, because that becomes the capital budget.
Just hold on just a second. Perhaps the actual answer here is for me to delete the egregious phrase, so you don't have to modify it, you just...
I would be fine with that.
When all departments will submit a capital budget, capital budget requests with, with a justification for the expenditure.
That works fine.
And those were due last Friday, just, so I already have them.
That's okay, but every once in a while, a good idea is followed before it's ever told you. Pete?
Well, you, and that was, that was my red-line version, is to strike exactly what you just said to strike. So, and my, my rationale is, this is, this is our statement to the town administrator.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't be given the directive to the department heads, anyway. So if the town administrator takes his statement, and again, this has already obviously occurred to Tony's point, but if the town administrator takes this statement, it's up to him at this time to translate that to his department heads. And if he wants them to offer up a funding source, that would be upon him to decide, not us. Ultimately, it's up to him to present it to the capital committee and for the entire group to present it to us, so.
So I'll stand with what I said initially, that I'll, I'll yield to the red-line version that Pete put out there, because it covers both what Jeff was saying and what I'm saying.
So were there any changes to paragraph, your red-line to paragraph three? Are we changing anything, or that we're going with the one that you sent in?
Paragraph three? Number three of the statement of the...
Yeah, well, at the very end, number three, does that stand?
Yeah, no, so we're deleting funding sources and. So we'll read, "All departments will submit capital budget requests with justification of expenditures."
Okay. All right. Clean this up for next week.
Yeah, if, if you have it in Word, you can just, you know, accept the changes and it'll be there.
Yep.
And in so saying, right, before we vote, I just want to make sure that you understand this and that the department heads all understand this. The reason I had originally put "level funded" was because it was going to be an adjustment to statement, taking into consideration known obligations such as, you know, health care and labor increases. This gets us to the same place, but I don't want, and I'm pretty sure nobody on this board wants, anybody to get the indication from us that level services could be, that it's going to cost you a lot more to do the same thing this coming year. This really is about trying to find different efficiencies and better ways of doing stuff. So even though we're saying level services, that does not mean that we don't care about how you deliver those services.
Correct. And we, we, I actually had a department head meeting, might have been last Monday, and that's exactly what we talked about, right? So what I explained to them was, as the board finalizes general policy guidances to understand what the intent is, as you just articulated, and then I translate that into specific action for the department heads as they go to put their budgets together. And we specifically talked at length about, this is a time where we're going to do kind of a bottom-up review, be looking at efficiencies and how we spend money and how we allocate resources. And so we're, we're going to go through that exercise as part of the build for FY '27.
So what we've got in front of us actually is adopting the red-line version that Pete put out.
Correct.
Which build, which built on the initial draft that I put out.
Okay.
With that, we have a motion to adopt that particular version for...
Go ahead. I was just going to say, so moved.
Second.
That works for me. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Town administrators report.
So in line with, I think, what we talked about earlier, I just wanted to let the board, we're in the process of creating a pretty detailed milestone timeline chart that takes us essentially from August all the way through town meeting and all the milestones we, we need to be leading up to that, including presentation of the budget to the, and capital plan to the select board and all of that. So I look for an opportunity to present that timeline to the board, so you can kind of see what we're, we're tracking on. I've found it very useful to make sure we don't miss anything important, but you'll see all the important milestones that you'll be getting different, various types of information on between now and when you receive the budget, and then after that, as we get it ready for, for town meeting. So we're just in the process of finalizing the draft on that. And then lastly, the finance director search town administrator advertisement is out there. It's been posted. The next timeline's coming up for the finance director are mid-October, and I think for the town administrator search preliminary interviews, the middle to the end of October. Now, that's the consultants portion of the preliminary stuff, so I would expect that shortly after that, the screening committee will start to get pulled into the, into the process. And then lastly, the legal services RFP is also on the street, so that's the end of, end of October, I think the 29th, for responses for that.
Okay, so there's that, but I kind of skipped over it. I was thinking that we're conflating, because I didn't see any contracts that you were asking for.
No contracts, but we do have an update related to the wall for road stairs.
I was going to get to that as another discrete item.
Yeah, so I mentioned, last week, we had two respondents for the engineering partial portion of that. They were both just under $30,000. As you know, we had a gift of $10,000, which leaves a pretty significant hole that there really isn't a way to fill that we've come up with. Those proposals, you know, like many of them, those prices are only good for...
Is the 30 to engineer it and build it, or just engineer it?
No, that's just the engineering and do the site surveys. They'll help with construction documents and all that, leading up to it, but they're not the builders of it.
And we have that in the budget for this year where?
We don't.
Okay. So essentially, this is going to need a warrant article, ultimately, unless it gets a benefactor of some sort.
Yeah, if, well, that's, I guess, the direction, is, is it something that's, we want to, you know, that the board wants to continue to pursue? We'd have to go to town meeting, and we'd have to insert it into the capital plan, I think. Well, yeah, again, given the construction costs, I don't have an estimate on that.
I'm guessing it'll be more than 20, so that would get you above 50.
All together, all in? Yeah.
I mean, I, for that location, for as few people use that, and in the financial situation we're in as a town, to spend 60 or 70,000 for a set of stairs, to me, is, is not feasible.
Jeff?
I have no comment on it.
My only comment was, there's no money in the budget right now, so for us to actually do this, we'd have to find some money outside of the budget, or we'd have to put it on a warrant article to get it approved outside of our budget. So, other members?
I have no comment.
Might be the best option, to get the real pulse of the community, as opposed to...
Well, certainly get a lot more visibility about who's getting the benefit of it and who is going to wind up paying for it. That's what probably belongs in town meeting. Mr. Chairman? Richard?
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry, couldn't be with you in person tonight. I just, as a fairness, other stairs in this town accessing public beaches have been replaced over the years. And I think that, you know, this is another public beach in town, and we can look for areas to pay for it. We need to do town meeting, that's fine, if you want the, the public to speak on it, but you're setting a very difficult precedence. And utilizing just how many people use that beach? If another storm hits other stairs in town, are you going to do the same thing? Are you going to shut other beaches down, because it may not be in the budget right now? You did receive a $10,000 gift from a benefactor to help with the engineering, and I'm happy to work with others to see if there are other funds out there. But I think that you should, if you have to, bring it to town meeting, but we should not just set this aside. Thank you.
And no one is setting it aside, but the town meeting is where it really needs to be discussed, because we don't have a lockbox in the bottom of a desk somewhere that's got $50,000 sitting in it, waiting for us to, to build another set of stairs. It wasn't appropriated, and I'm sure you know, as the Board of Assessors, that you've got to appropriate money to be able to pull a project off, and this one is actually large enough where it could easily be a capital project.
And that's all I ask, is that you do bring it to town meeting.
Sure.
Or put an article together and allow time to find funding, if at all possible, and if we can find a benefactor, all the better. But at least going through, if necessary, the engineering process, finding out what it might cost to do it. And if this were another set of stairs, you know, if this were another beach in town where we have already replaced, as these stairs have been replaced many, many years ago, we should look at it, because you are going to set a very, very dangerous precedence.
Okay. But again, I'm not, I'm not trying to relitigate that, and we're not trying to let it die of its own weight without a discussion, but it can't be done with the magnitude of the expenditure without an identified appropriation, and it doesn't have one. So it has to go to town meeting, unless, as I said, somebody gets, gets together to have a sponsored stairway, but no one's suggesting that at the moment. Matt, you wanted to say something?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Matt Sutcliffe, Harwich. I won't belabor the fact that had this board not changed the Conservation Commission's mind, we wouldn't even be talking about it. If you go forward and decide that this is necessary for the town of Harwich, I think I did a tally of about seven and a half million bucks' worth of other things to do on the yet-to-be-designated list. Forget the whole, whole list that you presented. So certainly, it's going to be 50, 60,000 bucks, any way you cut it. And for that, I think if you're going to go to have a warrant, given all the other expenditures in front of you, that you, as a board, would, in good conscience, announce to the whole town, that they're going to, you're going to make it accessible to the whole town, that not to just two or three neighbors.
And again, that discussion is a good discussion to have at town meeting, when we weigh whether you want to appropriate this and do it or not.
Well, I, I don't want to weigh that. I'd like to see you cut it dead tonight and let somebody else bring it up later on, if they so would. It's, it's definitely serves too few people, and if you're listening all night about how you're chasing money, and it doesn't make sense to chase this money for two or three people. Maybe you should sell the land to the guy, Mr. Ritchie, and then he can build his own stairs, and you can start collecting some tax revenue. You know, I mean, the whole thing's become a joke, so I ask you not to stand behind it. Let somebody bring something forth. Thank you.
What's the desire of the board? As we sit here?
Well, there's currently no funding source. We identified that, so we can revisit it at a later time, and if we want to put it on the, on this coming town meeting warrant, then we can.
And hopefully, the capital plan?
Well, to your point, if that's the number it's going to achieve, then yes.
Capital plan.
Jeff, any feelings?
I have no comment.
More?
I mean, I just think to expend 30, 40,000 on engineering and then the construction, it's, the cost benefit is not there. So I, I would say, you can bring it before town meeting, but I would think with all the other issues we're going to have, if you could prognosticate, that would not pass. And why go through, why go through the motions therefore?
I think, cutting this down the middle, it might be worthwhile to just get a firm estimate about what the all-in cost would be, because we don't know that right now. It's just engineering, and it is nothing else above that, but I'm pretty sure nobody's going to build it for free.
No, it's just, it would be, you know, what I call, I mean, part of the engineering stuff is to come up with estimated, you know, once they do the site survey and put all the, the stuff together, is where you're going to get, I would say, a solid enough construction estimate to take to town meeting, because people are going to ask the question, right? So...
But we'd have to spend money to get that.
That's correct. That's, I mean, we, you know, you can come up with a rough order of magnitude, but, you know, I don't know if I would stake too much on that, because we don't have enough information at all right now on what those construction costs could even be. We can come up with a number, but I don't know how, how solid it would be. This is the process by which you actually do that.
It's more or less late in the night at this point, so what I think that we should do is put this on another agenda, where people are given notice that we may or may not, not, we may make a decision to go forward or to not go forward, and have people in the room to have that discussion with. Does that sound?
And that's fine, I think, select board member's opinion, but before I relinquish my time, even if we ask to put this thing on a warrant, and I appreciate, select board member Keller's opinion, but even if we, if we decide to create a warrant article for this, it doesn't mean that the board supports it in the end. It simply gives us time to analyze and to study it and to see how much other information we can, you know, come in, you know, have come before us. And to Mr. Sutton's point, it is a public beach, so there's no two ways about it. It's a public beach. I don't know that we need to put a banner through town that says it's a public beach.
If I may? It's not on the list of public.
Sure.
Pardon me. It is not on the list of public beaches.
Right.
And I think, you know, if you're going to do this, I mean, I hate to be saying this, because it really is betrayal of Mrs. Jenkins, but if you're going to spend the public money, let everybody go, go at it. Let everybody have it. Let the neighbors enjoy the rest of the town enjoying it. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Sure. All right, so I think I want to take that course, though, bring it back, so that more people can opine about whether we should go forward with this or not.
And I'm on that page. I think it's a town asset, we're supposed to care for town assets. The public should have the opportunity to know it's going to be on an agenda for a discussion.
Yeah, because that's what I'm saying. It's buried at the end of an agenda. I don't think anybody recognized it, and they didn't know what the actual report was in terms of what the engineering costs were going to be. So, we'll just bring it back.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure. How about the town administrators' report?
You just did that.
You just did that.
Okay. Again. All right, select board member reports. Pete, you must have had a fulsome week. Waiting to use that word for a while.
Check it off your to-do list.
Yep.
I don't want anything I'm about to say to shock any of you or to indicate that it has my support. However, with all that said, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least explore the 29-plus-or-minus acres of Marcelline property that are currently for sale, probably something I should have brought up a couple of weeks ago. You know, at a minimum, we could at least ask the town administration to reach out to see.
That was Jimmy's old junkyard. That's not the other.
It's the 29 that's currently for sale, 29-plus acres. So, we could first determine if it is still for sale and what the asking price is, and with that information, it could go back to us for a discussion to see, you know, if it's something we want to explore and potentially ask town administration to work with various departments to see if there's any potential or best use for it. And again, before I get too deep, I'd also want to explore what happened 20 years ago with the cap and what's underneath that current soil. So, anyway, I don't want to go down that road yet. I just think it might be a worthwhile exercise to ask the town administrator to, or is designated to, reach out and find out the asking price of the property, if it's still on the market.
Well, I slugged through that property a number of times, watching Jimmy. He spent more than a year scraping soil and trying to get past the 21-year issue. So, I understand what you're saying, but it is a remarkable piece of property, and depending on what happens with it, the landscape of everything, including the traffic, well-changed.
And that's my point of why we should at least inquire.
All right, so we should, maybe we have a real estate and open space committee. Maybe we should.
We could expedite, we could expedite it and just make a quick phone call and find out what the asking price is and if it's still on the market, and then we can bring them in. I'm all for that.
Richard, are you representing that parcel or not?
Conservation Trust.
I am not. It's being represented, Mr. Chairman, by Premier Commercial. My understanding, it's in the general ballpark of 10 to 15 million, and there are a number of parties who are interested. There is a timeline. I will dig it out, and I will be happy to forward it to the town administrator to forward to all of you.
Thank you, that would be a help.
So, bake sale? GoFundMe, GoFundMe.
That's, that's a lot of cookies. It just is. Now that you've dropped that bombshell, are you done?
That's it.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mark?
Nothing to report.
Jeff?
I love the idea, Pete. I think that's a great idea.
How much are you kicking in again?
I don't know. I, listen, stranger things have happened. I would like to see if the board feels a discussion regarding a potential consultant arrangement for Megan after her departure. I can only imagine the amount of institutional knowledge she has, and I know she has committed to helping the town. Might not be a bad idea to have a conversation about formalizing a short-term consultant arrangement for her, number one. Number two, I know we had discussed revolving funds. I think that, I think as we're getting into budget cycle, it would be a good idea to have something on the agenda to discuss that before we're in the throes of the budget cycle.
Okay.
That could show us where some, some eggs are hidden.
You've been playing too many video games, the Easter eggs.
I've been playing them all night tonight, over here on my, on my laptop. Asteroids. That's it for me. Thank you.